Let's go ahead.
When did you last saw it?
Yeah.
Oh, from the little in the back.
This format.
Format.
We're all ready to get started and our first is to hear from the chamber.
Hello and good evening, council members, mayor, everyone in attendance.
Hi Troy.
Welcome to live where my thermostat is set at a sensible seventy-three degrees. Um, couple of updates and some fun things to share with you guys tonight. I had submitted to Chantal and the mayor our invoice for our first quarter expenditures. And I'm just about to ready to wrap up their second quarter expenditures and get that off. But similar to the first quarter, second quarter, pretty much the, the money we save per quarter, about fourteen percent of that is used for the visitor center operations. Thirty-one percent was used for festival expenses and fifty-five percent was used on wages, benefits, salaries, taxes, et cetera, all of those combined. And we had a rollover amount that we rolled into, to the next quarter because most of our expenses come in the third and fourth quarter of the year. Ambassadors, we just had two weekends of ambassadors under our belt. They've been out there, they'll be out there again this weekend sweltering, so we keeping them cool. But been a tremendous help to the crowds that we've been seeing out there. Lots of good feedback already through their daily reports that have come in that kind of track what they see and how many cars they are able to count at certain points of the day in each of the locations. Let's see, our, let's see, next ambassadors carvings for causes. I'm going to show your screen if I can. Here we go. I mentioned this, I think, last time our carvings for causes is now up and running. Our recipients this year are Oakland dogs and Royal Bavarians, meaning that they get a hundred percent of the proceeds raised for the money raised from all five carvings being claimed at the end of August. The silent auction entries, there is bear cub sledding near Darbal Heidi, and she is right there in City Hall Library Lobby. Sorry, so you probably saw her, Bigfoot on the trail, gnome loves beer and mountain goat bust. So those are in a couple of locations around town that you can see them as well as the one there at City Hall. And you have until August thirty-first to bid on one of those. And like I said, a hundred percent proceeds will be split between those two organizations. Other thing I wanted to point out is our ambassador and give us total programs were recently featured in Outside Magazine in an article showing how destinations are approaching sustainable tourism. And with over tourism pop pushing popular places to the limits, how can you be a good traveler? Kevin was quoted, Kayla was quoted and myself quoted, but it was good because they knocked on our door and said, hey, we'd like to be in this article as an example of what to do as a destination. The next, we have Oktoberfest tickets went live July first. We've sold about twenty percent of each of the dates already. And we sold the same amount on July first as we did from July first to the twentieth last July. So people are getting the message about booking their tickets and buying their tickets early. So that's really good for us. So you can go to the tickets right here on the Oktoberfest page to purchase tickets this year. Our Oktoberfest Ambassador Program is also up and ready for people to start considering. In a, the webpage went live today updated for, oh, there's a nice picture for twenty twenty-four. And the application will go live on August first. So organizations have time to kind of rally their troops, see if this is something they want to do, if they can get enough people together on the dates, and then on August first, we will open the applications. And then last thing, oh, no, I've got a couple more things. Our destination guide, this is brand spanking new. I don't think Kevin in the audience has even seen it yet, but our new destination guide, our revamped destination guide went live today from our website and it is has about, I think, sixteen additional pages than our old one. It's more of a magazine style. It reads really well, shares a little bit about our, our, our town. And for the first time, we have our walking map within the destination guide as information about our festival events, attractions, tours, activities. But a lot of, a lot of the new features within, I'm going to go fast because I'm trying to get to the recreation page. Here's our spokesperson again, but information about recreation. As some of our trails and these are the hikes that, that we recommend at the visitor center, but also our give us schnitzel messaging on there as well about being a better visitor. And then we have winter recreation as well, Nordic trails. This is, these are all new things that we had never had in the guide before. So it's a lot more of a useful tool than I think it has been in the past. Let's see, oh, back to Oktoberfest, I wanted to point out there will be a locals night again. It will be free, but we are going to make people register this year. So we have an idea of how many people are coming because it's a big management. It's a lot of people to, because literally everybody wants in the door immediately in there and a beer right away. So it will be free, but we will ask people to, to register. It'll be a free ticket, but we will then just check names at the door and be a lot faster for us to expedite. Lastly, we have a fire and smoke communication plan. I know Cara is aware of it, people on the lab committee, we've talked about it, but that is getting ready to be launched. And that's going to be a no before you go and also have a landing page for information about what's going on here with the smoke and people can make decisions if they want to come or not. If it gets to a condition where we have a lot of smoke in the area. So that will be going live on our website in a couple of days. And that is the end of my update.
Troy, can you hear me?
Yes.
Is it appropriate to share with council and the general public the possible decision that Oktoberfest is the more management thing when you're in the festival, the different day, the risk band issue?
Oh.
We shared that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think I shared that last time and I'm so glad because if it wasn't appropriate for you to share it, it would be so embarrassing.
We're in David's equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 no, we, we're going away from the tickets, no more paper tickets, counting the tickets. Not only is that like a kind of a pain for every, for everyone dealing with the tickets on the event, but we pay people to sit in our office and count those tickets for the weeks after, and it's a lot of man hours. Now we're going to these wristbands where you can charge it and just tap it when you go to, to pay. Or you can just use your, your credit card. So we kind of go fully automated there, which will, I think, make for a much expedited experience in many ways.
Yes. Yes, that'll be great.
I know souvenirs too.
I was going to ask you about the travel guide, is that something people just get handed, handed to them? They come to the visitor center or do they have, you know, how do they get a hold of that?
We distribute them to our partners, mostly hotels. And we have about seventy-five hundred information requests a year. So we're mailing those to people who have contacted us and want more information about Leavenworth and planning their trip. Do, it will be a combination of those two things.
Okay, so you, you tourists folks and just pick one up at the hotel they're staying in, is that the idea?
Yeah, and also, we also distribute them around town because it contains our service directory too. So in the back of it are all of the chamber members from real estate agents to plumbers are in the back too. So it's also a useful tool for locals as well.
Right, yeah, that's really extensive, quite a production.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
Troy, if you, excuse me, missed the live ambassador training, is it going to be like other years where you can go online and take it?
It absolutely is, I just finished that today. So there's going to be a webpage where the, the training, the hour training is broken up into four videos that you can watch at your own pace and then those little quizzes afterwards you take and you're good to go. So yeah, that'll be sent out shortly, I just finished that up today. And then I showed this is one of the pages on the directory, the weddings and meetings, this is brand new. We didn't actually have this in there before, it was on the website, but not in the directory. So anybody planning a wedding, we have so many venues and of course a big ad here for the festival, which links to, to your webpage there.
Great. Any other questions?
Are the Oktoberfest bracelets going to be able to be picked up before the festival to kind of log on and preload with ticket on something like that, or is that something only picked up at the gate when you get in?
You can get your account completely set up and, and then when you get your bracelet, it's super snap to, to get it going. So yeah, I don't think you get the bracelet early, but you can get your account set up with this service that we're using. It's a service that's like used, I think, at Lollapalooza and all these, these big festivals, so it's.
Okay. And Trudy, you shared with them too, the biggest, it's independent of if the internet's working or not, like the internet can go down.
It's extraordinary, it just stores.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it can help hold up to forty-eight hours worth of transactions if the internet goes down. Because that's always been my biggest fear is relying on technology and then technology fails and you have no way to take money. And, or do any transactions. So yeah, it'll still be able to operate even if we have the internet go down.
Even if the power goes out, battery power, so it's like it's.
Yeah.
Fail-safe wastage.
Yes.
The initial look.
Dark and cold, but I can still charge you for a beer, so that's. All right, thank you, guys.
Troy, I got one more question.
Sure.
With Project Baron not having their festival, you anticipate significant impact from that coming up here? They're stuck, you know, what are your, what have been your thoughts on that?
I don't think, I don't think it will, I don't think it will have significant impact, no. I don't, I think the attendance last year was led them to the decision they made, so I don't really think that there's a lot of impact. What has been impacted is if you're a big fan of S-Bon, they were, they'd are Oktoberfest here, they went to Wenatchee, but we have them back for all three weekends this year, so impacts in that way, but I really don't think so. And plus, you know, if it can, I mean, we, we hold a, I'll hold a line at a maximum ticket sell, so.
Okay.
Money we're going to take.
Right, all right, thanks.
That's a real to get S-Bon back because the crowd loves S-Bon, they'll follow him to all the tents he goes in. All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Right, our next item. Taking a look.
Great ride.
All right, I'll look for that.
Taking a look at your project update on the project tracker, something you see every quarter. Just for, again, just to provide the update, ask any questions you might have. On the project tracker?
Yeah.
How does fifty sound?
Fifty?
No, I do have some questions.
Like you don't want a regular meeting.
This one right here is what we're talking about, okay. On I forget which one this is on. On page four of eleven, security fencing, well field and deck, deck, deck. This, in the last sentence, this project is currently in the permitting and environmental review phase. So what does that look like?
Yeah, that's correct. And that's what we get off it right now, but our consultant is revising what they were proposing and looking at the impacts from that project. So in order to install the fence, they need to remove trees. And right now it's a pretty substantial number of trees specifically at the well field. So we're just going through the mitigation of that.
Okay, but it's going to happen.
It's going to happen, but the timeline is just dependent on the rest of the process. We'll need to do a, a cultural, a cultural evaluation and also look at the mitigation for the trees.
Okay.
Do you have anything more?
On page six, I forgot my glasses, page six of eleven, the top one Central Avenue sidewalk rehabilitation.
Yeah.
What's left on that since there's? Is that a long ways to go yet?
We actually just moved or we just talked today with TIB about potentially moving these funds to a different source. So this was originally Orchard Street and it was an application for a full reconstruction for Church Street, but it wasn't funded, they only funded seventy-five thousand dollars, which didn't get us very far in that road. So we moved them over to Central. But they were under the impression when they moved those funds that Osborne was still in use. And with the demo, the feasibility that's being looked at there, they don't want to bump that. So instead they're looking at moving that a third time to a different project. So this project probably will not proceed at this time.
Okay. On page two under items not scheduled at this time. How long, how far off are we going to put the Commissioner Frank's comments about wildfire and what the council could do?
Sorry, Sharon, can you tell me what page you're on?
Page one, under items not scheduled at this time.
Gotcha.
I mean, that was like a year ago, wasn't it?
It was August of last year.
Yeah, probably a year ago. It is firewise stuff, so it gives it, it concerns me when he had things that we could do. And I didn't get a list of those things, I don't know, did you get one, Ann? Did you get a list of things that Mr. Frank had listed that the council could do?
No.
Okay, for sure, I thought you did.
Do we get a list of those? We've discussed this several times, Sharon.
Yes, I know, I keep bringing it up.
Yeah, yeah, and we keep on saying the same thing, which was that Tom Wapolder was not present at that particular forum, but he did watch the video of it. And he, it wasn't that the council should do anything, he mentions specific things about public works. He mentioned water system optimization and he mentioned barricades. And those were things that Tom did look into.
And felt like you're very.
Yeah.
So did I imagine it or I thought he gave the council some ideas that we could, we could work on? Am I imagining that?
He had talked about some, some things that the city in general could do to be more fire ready.
Well, I think, I think one of the big things is getting more of the people, if you noticed who was on the dots that had done this, the assessments, that getting more of the city people to do their assessment.
Do assessments.
Yeah, because there was, you notice like Trump stick had all the dots where they had the assessments done and there were just a few within the city. That's one of the things is, but again, that's something they would do, it's something we can get the word out and help, you know, publicize it, but they're the ones that go over and do the fires.
Yeah, I know, say, here at my house.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey Sharon, this reminds me about, I had forgot to, to send them. I called him about two months ago, I just wanted to chat about some various things. And he said, get some other fire folks he wanted to move in and we haven't gotten back to each other. So when we do, I'll let you know.
Okay.
And then, you know, maybe you can join them.
I would like to.
Okay.
Okay. And I think there's just one more. Well, that's it, thanks.
So we on that list that Frank, Ross, Frank, do you have that list somewhere?
I don't, I don't have that, I, I had asked, not throwing Tom under the bus.
Right.
And Tom assured me that he had, he had watched the video, that he had and checked what he was recommending and it was, it was related to, if my, if my memory is correct, it was related to barricades, which we, our public works team knows how to do barricades. We do it all the time for festivals and whatnot. And then what, it was the water system station.
Right.
And when we, when Tom Water, we had the fire on Tom Water Mountain. Two weeks ago.
Yeah.
It was that last week, week before.
Yeah.
Tom reported to me that, hey, we have our, well, we have all the reservoirs at over a hundred percent full right now. We're going to keep them there and they, he relayed that information to Fire District Three as well.
That video is also on our YouTube channel, if you would like to watch it again.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, feel free. And we, we do have a wildfire discussion coming up, I think it's August thirteenth. Medical Lake will be presenting.
Here.
Either via Zoom, I think, I don't think they're going to drive here, but I confirmed with their city administrator at the Association of Washington City's annual meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, wildfire recovery discussion.
Yeah, right.
That's a decision.
And then if we have time after that, we'll, we'll discuss my idea to change our retrofit grant program to a retrofit loan program, so they're not just gifting public funds with no strings attached, which is how it's currently structured.
And Karen also put, I think I've seen that on our webpage and on social media.
Yes.
Blurted about firewise.
Yeah, we have a, we do have a wildfire specific page on our website now. She has shared lots of information, the whole ready, set, go program. So we've been doing a lot of education.
All right, any other questions on the project? On to our purchasing and procurement policy discussion.
You like keeping there is a paper copy in front of you, I'm not sure what happened. We, we had something glitch out when we combined it together, so I apologize. The format that was in your package, I've been super grateful. But this is the draft policy, a ring bowl purchasing and procurement for all things related to city activity. So this current policy was adopted in twenty nineteen and so on the purchasing side of things, this is increasing the limits for staff members to spend. And looking at the twenty nineteen policy, the, the purchasing limits were originally designated in twenty twelve and then in the twenty nineteen policy, they weren't revised. So really this is just adjusting for inflation, a combo of adjusting for inflation and as the name indicates, we discussed the current limits of increased symptom. So that's the purchasing side of things and then the procurement side of things looks, looks at the five different kind of categories of purchases that we made. And this is all based off of MRSC record descriptions and then also state federal law. And so as part of this, you'll see there's a breakdown of the five different types of procurement. And then in that we detail depending on the cost of each one of those categories, what the specific requirements are for staff to do. So we have the architect and engineering professional services, non-architect and engineering professional services, public works contracting, non-public works project purchasing, and then electronic data processing, telecommunications, equipment, software services. So really each one of these tables details the specific requirements for each one of those based off the estimated dollar amount. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, happy to walk through kind of whatever you want to see here. Especially when you might get a chance to probably leave it ahead of time. I think one, one thing to note too, we did adjust the dollar amounts in the procurement policy as well. So under our current policy, it's kind of a blanket statement for a lot of these types of things, except for the public works contracting. And so in this, we went through in detail specific dollar amounts where we don't need bids, we don't need specific solicitation, those are the, the small dollar amounts, like the first zero to some of these like ten thousand dollars. And really the purpose there is if we have a small project, so we're not spending a ton of staff time and resources in nailing down our, you know, under whatever policy, like spending time for treatment where we could just have your service or purchase something.
I'll let you know from a staff point of view, this is a beautiful tool. Very hard to keep it all straight and this, this is a great job. Thank you. It's been a long time in the making, so I'm sorry it's only in front of you now.
I mean, within our package, within like product.
And then it was in the paper package. It was in there, it just got.
Format it.
Formatted differently.
Annie, who would just be initiated?
Um, basically the intention was that we have this on the next council agenda. There was one item in here, we're reading effective July first, there was a change in state law for specifically the non-public works purchasing. That increased the state law, the no, no quotes requirement for up to forty thousand dollars. So that actually is reflected in here and we intentionally were holding off on this until that state law went into effect just because we do have things like wastewater treatment plant pumps that come up. And if we don't have flexibility in that, we have to bid those. And it becomes a much more lengthy process, especially when we have something that's down that we need repaired quickly, yet it's not an emergency. So we, we purposely held off on this to give us a little bit of flexibility not to.
Any other questions?
In the, in that section, I just noticed table six on page ten, tier five starts at forty thousand and one dollars, shouldn't that be fifty thousand and one dollar?
Oh, it's up to.
It's up to.
It's up to.
Your intention. Yeah, this one's a little bit funky, but it's, it's not necessarily a tier in the same context. It's because a vendor list is a separate use that you can have.
Versus formal competitive.
But legally you could only use a vendor list up to fifty thousand dollars for a code city of our population.
Gotcha, all right, understood, thank you.
Andy, that front page one, so purchasing authority?
Yes.
What would that entail, like, I mean, so just, you can, those individuals, definitely they're allowed, they're happy with their procedure to, to max that out, right, to reach that amount.
Yeah, correct, like, for example, on level one, increasing the operative maximum purchase price for, you know, someone in our streets utilities crew, they go to Markson's and they need to purchase something for their daily work. This allows them to purchase something up to a hundred and fifty thousand, oh my gosh, no, a hundred and fifty dollars. No, I'm sorry. Without needing to go to their supervisor and have their supervisor sign off on it before they make the purchase.
Okay. So they sit in administrative and, and per se to twenty-five thousand?
Correct, and then really under this policy, as long as the, the total fund for that specific fund that that'll be purchased out of has sufficient remaining balance, it doesn't need to come to council.
Okay, without council approval, right.
It's already in the budget, it's already.
And right now for your reference, that is thirty thousand dollars is the threshold that we need to bring to council or have to extend it.
Like for the city administrator?
Uh, right now the city administrator's fifteen thousand.
And the mayor's thirty.
The mayor's thirty thousand, so then currently anything over thirty thousand needs to come to council or this coffee, anything over fifty thousand.
I understand, okay.
And when was the last time this was updated?
Was last updated in twenty twelve.
Yeah.
Was the last time the dollar amount.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, we will move on to the stock sign policy.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Have a good date night.
Kevin, good question. Did you ride your mountain bike to the Toposkeetl while wearing those later hosen or did you change into them when you got to the top?
But she and I did have to settle a little bit, so I.
Okay, all right, all right, good question, so.
So the stop sign policy discussion was just kind of a high level discussion, but one of the issues right now under this current policy that was adopted under resolution six of twenty fifteen is that procedurally it requires us to go through the public seat committee since then to solve. And so the procedures. And so with a procedure standpoint, it does need to be revised so that we have a clear path forward. Uh, I do have three stop sign requests that have been pending for a while. Under this current policy, uh, I don't have a clear direction on how to proceed with them. Uh, from like a policy standpoint, but then also on the technical side of things, um, this really has, I guess, four components. It looks at accidents, visibility, multiple uses, traffic volume is how it's detailed in here. And then there are two additional components where the public safety team can, or committee can make a recommendation for a stop sign. And the public works director can make a recommendation. And so with those six combined, uh, in order to put a stop sign up right now, you need to have a minimum of three of these requirements that, and it's in your packet, the current resolution of this is adopted under. But the issue that I'm running into is under this policy, there are places where if I was to go through and check these boxes, I would say, yes, we need to put a stop sign here, but looking at the geometry of the intersection and the differential in volume between like the major and minor lake, it would make no sense to do so. And so just from a technical standpoint, I feel that this does need to be resolved so that we don't end up with stop signs in wild places where they would make no sense, but then also actually create more of a safety issue. Uh, like, for example, I have a request for a stop sign on Ski Hill Drive itself. Which, looking at it, I think we can all understand that that's definitely the major lake through there. And it wouldn't make sense under, I mean, under this policy, but like, looking at holistically, that's not something I would recommend. That doesn't seem like a safe path forward. And then we also put pedestrians at risk when we put a stop sign in a location that a vehicle will not stop at or doesn't, it's not conducive for them to stop there. And so, uh, that's kind of with these two pieces together is why we're looking at revising this policy. Um.
Andy, what street was your public street where you're talking about?
Um, it was on Ski Hill.
Oh, Ski Hill.
Yeah, yeah, Ski Hill, sir. And what's the cross street, not Ranger? Um, no, it was inside city limits. I think it was
Central.
Have I been Evans? Oh, somewhere in that one.
Yeah.
But it's one of those things like where I look at it and like, holistically, this doesn't feel right. This doesn't make sense. Yeah, under the policy, uh, you know, when we look at visibility and the multiple uses, traffic volume, all those things, it's not taking a holistic approach to view it. And also just from reaching out to specifically City One, actually, but there's a couple other local agencies that don't have a stop sign policy. They just sort of rely on their city engineer to make the determination of whether or not a stop sign would make sense there. And so I guess part of that too, um, is just a discussion on policy, like, is that something that we feel that the council should be involved in the decision of whether or not a stop sign is placed?
Yeah.
So would we rather have that be on staff? Makes that the prosecution. And yeah, under the, under the public works organizational assessment presentation, that would fall to the city.
What were the reasons given for a stop sign?
What were the
Some of the reasons that whoever wanted the stop sign, why did they want it?
Under our policy, they don't have to really give a reason. They just say, I would like a stop sign here. And we respond, say, okay, we'll look into this. I didn't really have specific reasons.
Well, I can say
Yeah, Travis?
Well, I could, I could see when you, I, I understand these six different items, three out of the six need to, to be in place, but it's, it's not, the, the stop sign at Ski Hill and Evans isn't egregious because not all of those side streets are connectors and Evans is a connector. So people are slowing down, looking for the street Evans and to take a left to connect, right? I could see that being a potential hazard. If there's a stop sign, it kind of denotes that this is kind of an intersection coming up. It's more of a major street, right? And that, we're not here to debate what, what is. I, I, I could see the logic that there could be a stop sign there or a crosswalk that would denote a connector street like Evans and a Ski Hill. Does that make sense?
I'd like to add something to that, just because I live right by that intersection. And about four months ago, I was out walking there and a car crashed in front of me, maybe twenty feet away of that intersection, two cars in each other. And my daughter had one accident. She got there when she was at high school. Um, and so I wonder if you know, there to be something else like a caution sign or I don't know, anything else is, yeah, healed or something. Just because I did witness that, it was pretty dramatic.
Yeah, absolutely. And that was on Ski Hill at some.
Where was it? Yeah, someone was pulling, a guy was coming up Ski Hill and someone was entering Ski Hill from Evans and they smashed.
Gotcha. And I think some of that too, like just note, and again, the, the point of this discussion, not to go into the specifics of each intersection, but like that also has a safe distance issue with vegetation, which is kind of a separate issue beyond just a stop sign. But there's a lot going on there. There's also, it is, I think historically, I don't know if there was narrow right of way or there wasn't setback, but there's property that's historically really close to the road.
Yeah, that's true.
So there, there's a lot of components going on there.
Yeah.
I guess generally looking at the stop sign policy, um, we do need some sort of written warrant, whether that is a specific policy that we analyze a request under or it's just written documentation of why we put a sign up. Really, as part of the public works organizational assessment, that was another risk that was identified was that, uh, we put signs up in our city without having a written warrant of why we did that. And from their perspective, that opens us up to liability where we don't have someone who's responsible to review and document why that's done. Uh, if there's like an accident or something that comes up and we're taking court for that, we don't have justification of why that sentence there. We don't have a warrant. So it can be sensible. You know, something that staff completes, or it can be a policy similar to this that we go through a formal procedure on. But we have to have something in place to document why we put the signs up.
Well, Andy, there's a stop sign on Evans, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
There is for the intersecting one.
Right.
Sorry, yes, on Evans.
Yeah, so they're, they wanted a stop sign on Ski Hill?
Yeah, they want to make it a freeway stop.
Oh, yeah.
So those are the types of things that I look at that and that like, in my professional judgment, that doesn't make sense.
Right, right.
But feel that doesn't seem right. I can't justify doing that. Yet for the policy, I would stay, yes.
Consider right.
So that's where I think there just needs to be a few more factors, um, considered if we do proceed with like a policy such as this that spells out, you must have these boxes checked, then you get a sponsor.
Would it just, yeah, so when now she doesn't have criteria?
No, they just
Staff make the decision.
Yeah.
I'd be inclined to have staff make the decision of this side.
Takes it away from political
I don't think this needs to be a city council decision.
I think so.
Um, do you have a working draft on how you would amend the existing policy to work better for you?
Truthfully, I don't.
Okay. I don't have a working draft. I have, I have specific items that I have in mind, but I have not put it in any sort of draft. It's like, it's like in a book right now. And I, I do think the elements of this policy make sense, but I do feel like it needs to be more refined and more specific.
I support that.
Yeah, I think you, staff should come up with, uh, you know, we're not, we're not the ones that decide.
Okay.
Because you were, you're there, you studied it, all that, I mean, that's
You're the engineer.
Yeah, you're the engineer.
Okay, understood. Any other questions?
No.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
I think we're gonna quiet it. Sorry, we don't announce, announce the next item. Sorry.
The next item is the tenant protection ordinance discussion.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have quite a long break. Um, we put this on the agenda and then ran this through our legal counsel. Um, he had some concerns about the draft ordinance that I furnished with him that was based on white salmon. Those concerns are outlined in a confidential memo that is before you. Um, we'll use this time for you guys to digest that confidential memo.
Thank you.
Um, we will set a public hearing for August thirteenth and I will schedule an executive session with our attorney for the July twenty-third meeting so we can work out any issues, um, that he may have with his ordinance and executive session. Um, and then we'll have the hearing on August thirteenth. Uh, one of the most pertinent things, or one of the things that he did ask, or he is recommending is to delay the implementation of it should this uh, ordinance be adopted. So not have it
Would it be better to
Adopt it in five days.
Potentially continue working on this? And when we have it in a place
We could do
That we're ready, then we schedule the public hearing?
Happy to do that. So we can pull the, we can pull that, um, number six off the consent when we get to the business meeting and not set that public hearing now. We do the executive session on the twenty-third with council.
Based on the content of the menu, it feels like we've got a little more work to do.
Yeah, sounds good. Sounds pretty. So you guys, if you could just return to me those confidential venue memos when you are done reading them.
Yeah. And they did not.
And now, now not until seven o'clock.
So we're gonna read it now.
Yeah.
And then, and yeah, to give it to me when you're done reading.
And no questions because
Yeah, we're not gonna have a discussion about this, you know, in public. Sir. Travis, you don't have it. I will email it to you, sir.
Oh, he disappeared.
We did?
I'll email to him. Oh. He did email me and the mayor and I for, I neglected to clue you in.
Sorry. Send it to him behind.
So do you want us to write on this or not?
No, no marking on it, please. Otherwise that conf Public, if you mark on it, it becomes public record.
They said that one city went soft there, so.
Oh.
Oh, our YouTube channel?
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how to find it. I don't remember having
Right, too.
Got plenty of time to get those notes from Jim.
I'll do it by then.
She should be back.
I talked to her yesterday. She was still feeling, still sounding and feeling certain and she wanted to work from home today.
She comes in tomorrow.
She was planning on it when I talked to her.
Touch base on this.
Oh, oh, cool. Yeah, I, I haven't tracked that, that closely. Other than the Not the right messaging. It's always good to use the words man.
And we fixed it in one step, but now she's finally set on others, yeah.
Thank you.
The only others that I noticed today that would be important, I peened you about utility rates.
You did. That's on next, is that next month?
It's our next agenda.
Okay.
We'll talk about it tomorrow.
Yeah.
My thoughts, just looking at everything, I'd say let's just go with education. Oh, maybe the draft figures of the revenue requirements. I know you want to talk about the potential rate design for longer, which are three options. And drug deaths to see, I mean, those are the four that he's got. He wanted to try to fit all four in one hour.
Fifteen minutes per topic?
Right.
Yeah.
We'll just, I'll just reply to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
What'd you think about it?
Training today, Mayor? Let me think about the training today.
Yeah, I know.
It was good to, I think that, that time together.
Yes, please do.
Do you want to have F two, which is
No, just the confidential.
So this is not confidential.
No, that's, that's, that's been published.
Yeah.
Okay.
Subby?
Yeah, Travis, I emailed you.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I could get it via email or just set a meeting with you to review it.
Yeah, no, I sent, I sent you by email. It is, it, it wouldn't come up in a public records request because I labeled it privileged.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. But it will self-destruct.
And you, and you with it?
Yeah.
Just what I need in my life right now.
So are we breaking till seven?
We are.
Yeah, so we're done then.
Yeah. I just gotta check for two hundred dollars.
Right, I will call this meeting to order for Leavenworth City Council for July ninth. We stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thanks.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, a integre republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Clint Strand.
Anne Hesper.
Dee Royster, Shane Thayer.
Rhonda Baron. And Travis, I'm, I'm promoting you. This is that Travis.
There is.
Travis McMaster.
All right, great. You got everybody. Um, we are scratching one item from the consent agenda, item number six. And Sharon, you got a couple of questions? I do. On page one, under accounts payable, Leavenworth Osborne Adaptive Reuse. What does that mean? Where's that money's going somewhere?
So what was the, I'm not looking at it.
That is six thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars for ar- architects.
Okay, that's the, uh, project manager for the Os- the Osborne Property Adaptive Reuse Project.
And what are they working on specifically?
That particular was the plant, the, the fatal flaws analysis that we, that we did.
Okay, sure. Okay. Um, on that same page, wellness committee supplies. Can you remind me about the wellness committee?
Andrea can.
Andrea's our chair.
Okay.
It's a group that we have that, um, just does activities and um, we give out some swag and some prizes sometimes. Um, just to promote wellness in amongst the city hall and public work staff.
It's a staff-run wellness committee.
Pardon me?
It's a staff-run wellness committee to encourage wellness amongst our
I'm not hearing you right. A staff?
Staff run, it's a staff-run wellness committee.
My hearing aids are down again.
We'll speak up tonight.
The one thing was July, we played bingo. And in the bingo, we had to do all these different wellness activities to
Earn the spot.
Win some prizes.
You had to do burpees and you had to walk ten thousand steps in a day. You had to run a five K or walk a five K. You had to go for a hike.
It sounds like fun, but where does the money come from?
Uh, the general fund.
It's, it's out of a central service fund, so it's coming from all of our different funds that go into the central.
Okay, there's not like a wellness fund exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. Next question is on the next page, on page two. I'm sorry, I forgot my glasses. Parks, a rain bird controller.
Um, I, I am assuming that that is for one of our irrigation systems.
Yep.
It's just called that.
Yeah, that's the It's the brand.
Okay.
It's something that'll that will prevent the irrigation system from going on. When it senses that there's been rain, so we're not. Irrigating something that just got a fresh dose of rain.
Okay. On the next page, page four down at the bottom. Trees for Enchantment Park.
What's those, that's for trees for enchant park?
Okay, so you just um bought a bunch of trees and took them down in Chapman Park and. Put them around.
Yeah.
Okay. On the next page. Game times, well, the Osborne Park, the playground equipment. Are we paying it all at once here?
Yep.
Okay, and when are they gonna show up again?
They took a couple of days off due to the heat.
Last week.
So they were here, I think, as late as Friday. And then with the heat, um they'll be back as soon as the weather's.
I didn't see him all week last week and didn't see him today.
No, they, I know they weren't here yesterday or today. Um, I, John didn't tell me what day they're coming back, but he did tell me that they took a, they took a break because of the heat.
Okay.
Hope to be back Thursday.
Alright, Thursday?
That's the hope.
Is that going to delay anything?
No, it's still on.
Yeah, they're still ahead of schedule right now.
And do we, did we pay them all of the money? I don't usually keep some and then it, and then the the end you.
I don't know the status of that. Their invoice, as I look across them, that's right here in front of me. Is a lot of equipment troubles, which all the equipment has been delivered.
Okay.
Does it, does this actually include staffing? It does have installation charges as well.
Okay.
So I think this is pretty much all of it.
Yeah, cuz I thought they said one point two million and so it looks like.
It's close.
Okay, yeah, it's very.
Alright. I think just three more questions. I'll leave you guys alone. Okay, on page. Seven. For. Travis McMasters for the conference he went to.
Yep.
And I just said, uh, Selby and Carl, are they included in this or you guys?
No, they're separate. Um, you'll see. Down uh on the next page is my reimbursement.
Okay.
For the hotel and meals and Carl probably hasn't submitted his expense.
No, I get it my mind from A W C.
Oh, because the mayor's on the board is expenses are covered by A W C.
Okay, and on the next page. I guess it just said repairs and maintenance at Osborne.
Who's the vendor?
Pardon me?
What's the vendor?
Cybus LLC.
Oh, that's our cyber lock system.
So remember, when we bought the Osborne, we had no idea how many keys existed in the Kennedy and we never rekeyed that building. And therefore, there's been a lot of vandalism because we don't know who has a key. We have now put our cyber key.
Those are, okay.
Let me guess, fewer breakouts.
There will be.
So that's in now, those are in now?
They are, they've been installed.
Okay, and page nine, I think there's just two more questions. At the very part. Beginning. I darn it, I should have brought my glasses. Security improvements at parks and festivals, is that also those?
It is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And. This is the last question, yay. On page twelve. Two people Cobra Insurance one month. I guess I thought your Cobra Insurance is when you retire, you could. Get Cobra.
So when you um leave a job. Divided by federal law, the employer must give the option of continuing on with the health insurance through something called Cobra.
Okay.
Um, when we hire people, however, the health insurance that we have through the inland teamsters trust. Even though we start paying in the first month of the employee being there, they don't start covering employees until the third month, until they receive three payments from the city. Then they'll put the employee on the plan. So we don't want our employees. Being uninsured. So we will, when we make offers, we'll discuss their health insurance needs and if required, we will pay up to what we would be paying in our premium. Um, for their Cobra payments, to make sure that they're still insured.
That makes sense, thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with item six. Um, scratched. So. Moved by Z, seconded by Aaron. You know the questions, all in favor, let me see your hands. And.
I'll bring you to your hand.
Let's see your hand, put it up there. Yeah, yeah.
The shadow.
It's kind of dark, but.
I'm in a, I'm in a really hot room and so, yeah, sorry.
It passes unanimously. Comments from the public on items not on the agenda. Show there's some items on the agenda, but how about not on it? Anybody, is there anybody on?
We have a couple of guests online. I don't see any.
Raising their hands. Okay, we'll assume not and we'll move on to our presentation from our Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. Joe.
No, I've got a clicker up there for you. Let me start it here real quick. There we go. So, okay, there you go. Fantastic.
There we go.
Alright, my name is Joseph Bridges and I'm a wildlife conflict specialist with Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. And I'm here today with Sergeant Will Smith. He's an enforcement officer for the area. We're here today to talk about black bears in Leavenworth. Leavenworth is nestled within some of the most geographically unique and picturesque areas in the past eighty nine years. This geography combined with being located. At the confluence of four river corridors highlighted in blue places Leavenworth in a biologically unique location as well. When river corridors converge. And steep geography restricts where wildlife species can traverse, you get what biologists refer to as a green wave or a travel corridor. These help wildlife move one area to the next as they go through. This travel corridor highlighting the green runs through Leavenworth. From perspective, Blackbird Island is a part of this travel port. And it's also a valuable asset to the city of Leavenworth. When we zoom into Leavenworth, we see that these collared bears in this illustration are following the general patterns that we described before. And I really want to highlight that this is just the collared bears. There's uncollared bears intermingley at the same time. Just don't have the locations. This pattern of river corridors in high call volume continue to play out when we look at wildlife reports from bears in Leavenworth. This kind of overall archy landscape right there is why we have this repeating pattern that's been playing out for about the last thirty years. With human wildlife conflict in Leavenworth. One of the questions I was asked to cover is, when does conflict rise to the occasion of trapping and removing a bear? Each bear is evaluated on a case by case basis. The first step for the department is information and education with a high focus on attract removing attractants. Then if the bear continues to exist these bulleted behaviors after those attractants have been removed. The department makes an evaluation this time. One of the things I want to point out is that there's been a hundred and fifty falls within the city of Leavenworth proper. This is excluding all of the surrounding, it's just within the city limits. With the city of Leavenworth being just over a square mile, that's a really high call density for one square. What are other things that we have to consider when we are trapping a bear? Right now, today, we are experiencing some of the hottest heat we've had. That is a no go for bears. It's. Really bad to travel with this kind of temperatures. Another thing is cubs with the offending bear. If that is an issue, that's something else that we have to address as well. But then with this high density of Leavenworth, we have to really take into consideration the safety of the individuals recreating in this area. We can lose traps due to. Here we are. Unfortunately, translocating adult bears rarely works. This bear here was trapped at Lake Wenatchee. Transported twenty-six area miles, that's a hundred and sixteen miles by vehicle transport. And returned back to the same address within ten days. So for a slight increase in successful translocation, biologists have found that you have to move these bears more than eighty area miles away. For them not to return. Question then is for us as biologists is, where do you transport a live bear that's eighty miles away from the nearest trash heap? And what does that community think about their new bear that's been brought in their area? While Leavenworth is home to twenty-two hundred residents, Leavenworth also hosts sixty-nine thousand visitors a week, pulling three point six million visitors per year. When we compare Leavenworth to Yellowstone National Park, we find that Leavenworth is attracting nearly as many visitors per year as some of the national parks. Although it has twenty-two hundred residents, if we include the weekly visitors. City is then operating with about seventy-one thousand people a week, you know, and that's seventy-one thousand size city. Okay? Another unique aspect about Leavenworth is the density at which it hosts its guests. Yellowstone National Park has thirty-four hundred square miles for four point five million people. There's one square mile for three point six million. So we have a very high list. This also kind of highlights why we need to have a collaborative approach if Leavenworth is wanting to move forward with private positions of experience. One of the recent collaborations involved the city of Leavenworth. W D F W, Defenders Wildlife and Orphaned Products. We all contributed together about twenty-five thousand dollars and bought the school district bear wise containers that are bear resistant. Okay. Kind of really started addressing that issue right there. She identified it as. We also created custom labels, custom information and education distributed to the school district and city hall as well. And right up there at the top left is that custom sticker there. After working with Tom Lockholder, I really discovered that Leavenworth is doing the best they can with three hundred gallon totes that they have available. The biggest problem identified is that there is no three hundred gallon tote with a bear resistant lid. So we're having this problem constantly reoccur. This caused the department to reach out to Northland Products and just ask them, what would it take to develop a three hundred gallon tote? With your proven bear resistant lid. After about a year of collaborative conversations on needs, other cities that are doing this. They've actually developed this and it's in testing right now and it will be on the market in November this year. So it's gonna be the first three hundred gallon tote with bear bear resistant. W D F W also teamed up with Waste Management to identify the barriers that customers were experiencing to upgrading their own bear resistant totes. This has benefited the city of Leavenworth, but also everybody in Chland County as well, kind of helped reduce those barriers. Another key component on this topic is to assist Leavenworth residential customers with transitioning or with residential customers. Transitioning to bear resistant totes. To accomplish this, W D F W worked with waste management to offer solutions for residential customers cost. Waste management also committed to waiving the additional fourteen ninety-five a month fee. If the customer, the city, or someone were to purchase those cans out. Leavenworth's transition to bear resistant cans will not only benefit residential customers. But it will also benefit the three point six million visitor fish in Leavenworth every single year. One thing I wanted to point out that you said, to do that at this cost, less than half a million. In addition to upgrading bear resistant totes, enacting simple ordinances that have already been implemented in other cities like Missoula, Montana, and Dale, Colorado. Will also help. If Leavenworth closer enact these ordinances, the frequency of the bearing ports will reduce drastically. You'll keep the bears in the woods and out of the community. By doing these three simple things, upgrading the city's commercial refuse infrastructure, transitioning residential customers to bear resistant totes. And enacting simple ordinances. Leavenworth will be the first community in the state of Washington to become bear wise and be an example for other ci- cities within this state struggling with this same issue. Any free time and any questions, I'm here.
How much is Northland gonna charge for that free or account too?
It's about three hundred and thirty bucks. The biggest problem is shipping right now. The one is almost the same cost as shipping for point five thousand. You know, and even so. Doing it in a big project. Helps bring that cost down more by, we're trying to reduce shipping costs essentially to a better.
What did you mean by um buying the cans outright? For the community members?
Yeah, so. Waste management, if you were to just go and upgrade the can and rent it from them. They've got to charge you an additional fifteen dollars a month, okay? But they would quit. They have said that if you buy the can at three hundred and thirty dollars, we won't charge you that fifteen dollars extra per month. So that's kind of their way of giving back, trying to help.
Property owner could buy the can?
Absolutely. Yeah. Really just who wants to buy it at this point, you know?
So Joe, Waste Management does have. Bear approved. Fans for three hundred dollars?
They did.
And their capacity is?
Ninety-six and sixty-four.
Okay. What's the, oh, go ahead.
I like the idea of becoming up the first community that's bear wise. Um, you know. Um, I have a question about what attracts bears because. I actually on purpose have a wildlife habitat yard and I live right in town.
Sure.
And I never have problems with bears, never. So I wonder. I I was, it went by really fast. There's something about pet food and some other things. Are there things that individuals that own homes do that? They, that attract bears to their place?
Absolutely. Um, one pound of bird seed is seven thousand calories. That's like three days for a bear out in the woods, okay? And so they get two cap, two bird feeders. They get a, they get a six day reprieve, you know, and it's all a calorie skating discipline. Cat food, dog food, chicken poops, those are all sources of high carbohydrates. And so that's what they're really after. They don't care what those carbohydrates or sugar look like. They just want to system. Yeah, and that's kind of what those simple ordinances kind of help address is. You put a requiring a top on chicken poops, doesn't take chicken poops away, but it takes that unknown attractive. There. Um, not having bird feeders out between certain times of the year really, really helps with that, you know? Those are things that we can do on a general basis, but. If I'm gonna say what we're running into is that there's a lot of attractants in the city. We've got bears pulling through the surrounding communities in order to get there. And that just might be why you, you're not necessarily gonna travel forward or for that, or maybe a little bit farther away. That where that will kind of reduce those things, but it's pretty well identified right where we. Right where all of these offending animals come through and it's time to.
Well, we can start education without. Without much of an investment. So anyway, thanks for that information.
Yeah. And on this transition, I am personally here to help you guys the whole way through on this. Um, it does take a collaborative approach, takes a lot of information and education.
Yeah.
But it really does. Kind of is on you guys.
Um, at night, if I walk my dog, I try not to let that happen, but sometimes it does and I have to walk it always. I wear a whistle thinking that if a bear shows up, I'll blow the whistle, the bear will run away. Are there things you can do if you do, because there are bears and towns and people do um. Bump into them.
The two things that I would say is keep your animal on leash, okay?
Yeah.
Um, generally what we find is if a dog is off the leash. They run up and confront that bear and start a fight, then the dog wants to get behind you.
Okay.
Um, then also just making noise and letting them know. Bears can only see about thirty feet, so they need either see you or hear or smell you or hear you. In order to know where you're at. In order to know where you're at. So that's why you'll come into these trails sometimes where you're both kind of coming around and like, oh. You know, and most of the time that doesn't happen, but the one time it changes the different direction, that's what we're trying.
Joel, in places like Whitefish, Kalispell. You know what they're up to dealing with tourists and bear corridors and we didn't create any connections with those guys and folks like that, mountain towns like that?
Yeah. So what bear wise is that it's an operation of almost all four fifty white, wildlife labs. Wildlife departments within the states, okay? So they've all agreed that this is universal language that's been agreed and approved upon by biologists across the area, you know, and so. They've really gone through this a bunch. British Columbia has gone through this extensive. Um, Florida is going through this where they they just bought, got a million dollars to just go buy Westfens cans in this town. You know, and so. Now that we've got these, this infrastructure, we've got bear proof containers that work. They don't get hung up on track, the trash compactors and all of this other stuff. I'm looking at this more as just an upgrade in the infrastructure at this point in time. Because as we highlighted back there is. You're not going to stop this problem. What we need to do is make it toward when these bears come through, they're not getting rewarded the same. Right now.
Sure, I see that Travis has his hand up.
Hello, sure.
Travis.
Hey, man, I'll tell you, I I spoke to both you guys at the community night and really enjoyed. The depth of your knowledge and your passion for, I mean, uh, there's, there's nobody more experienced than than you uh, on the subject for sure. Um, good presentation, great presentation. Um, very curious about the ordinance. Um, I I'm I'm on track with that, like, uh. I agree with with becoming one of the first like bear wise cities. I am curious as tonight we're looking at passing and um, an ordinance on. Um. Condominiums, when you, what's your experience in, um? Is it the owner of the property, right? Because the condominiums would have an HOA. I live in a condo with an HOA and I rent. So I would, you know, is it the owner, the property owner or the renter? Who's ultimately going to be responsible for the bear wise or the? The um. Bear garbage cans.
I think it's going to be tied more to the residences that waste, like you guys are servicing and then waste management is also servicing as well. You know, and so it will just replace whatever existing relationship that's already there.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, like you said, with my particular situation with an HOA. And a renter and then the other person on the property is an owner. The HOA pays for our garbage and I pay, the landlord adds that to my rent, so. I wouldn't be, you know, just again, it's a, it's a, it's a maybe just an outlying situation, but. I'm don't pay the garbage and it's not in my name. The it's in the HOA's name. You see what I'm saying?
Waste management will just be working with the HOA that's already been established. That's something else that waste management does in work with each of ways.
Okay, so as far as compliance, as far as compliance goes, I'm just, so it'd be, if it's ever, there's a. A resistant own property owner that just doesn't want to put a dime into the property and it's, you know, he just doesn't want to spend the three hundred bucks. I'm just trying to figure out, is it, you know, if there's an ordinance, then does the the person living in the house? Get the the fines or the property owner or the HOA?
Sure, let me, Sergeant Will Smith speak on that a little bit more.
So yeah, yeah, well. Yeah, I'm too responsible for the case. Uh, so if it's. Going to be the renter, whoever's the one taking the can out is going to be. Ideally the first.
Okay.
Obviously, if you. Uh, part of the agreement is that the the manager is the one taking the trash out. Everything else that would be. On that, actually, it's who are being responsible, but that's also depending how the ordinance are originally, there's examples in that bear wise of how they're ready. Um, there's options for people who don't want uh, very big can, but having very. Shed and things like that, there are options that way too, but uh, the benefit of ordinances, uh, visualize has. Negligently attracting carnivores, the fractions of thousand dollars. Which is pretty happy for somebody who is being negligent in certain areas of trash. So that that one is one we. Uh, use lightly. Um, it's, we actually haven't issued that one yet for any kind of trash. But having ordinances that are in place to help back that, um, one that built a culture, uh, neighbors will start watching out for each other and hopefully. They self educate and self police and there aren't infractions given. Um, but having ordinances in place that helps prevent negligence to have those individuals to work lightly. Um. Leaving out attractants and doing things as opposed to, it's pretty clear when everyone else is doing their part and somebody is. Compared to the.
Self policing.
Not wise, you know, new to the area, never dealt bears go, hey, this is convenient. My trash out two days earlier, something taken off. Um, for the weekend, um, you know, but uh, yeah, it's just. One is trying to help their self police statement and potentially having that's lesser than a thousand dollar fraction in places. Yeah.
Yeah, hey, I I said Joe is such an authority on this and I had a great conversation with you that night as well. Well, thanks for coming too and it's it's good to see you. Yeah, no, you're. You're such a wealth of knowledge and I appreciate you. Thanks for, thanks for the explanation on that. That makes sense. Thanks.
One more question. So we have, Wynden has the residential compost program that people can opt into and I'm just curious for someone's trash who doesn't have organics that. Um, diverted that to the compost program, what is like? Proportionately, what is the risk look like for a bear getting into garbage that doesn't have organics? Is that less of an attraction to that?
No. If you dump the perfume out of the bottle, does the bottle still smell? And then it'll kind of revert that back to you.
Thank you.
So who would be giving the infractions? If that's what, you know, we ended up with.
We get to that point where.
So that would be dependent. So right now I believe all ordinances are for city level or handled by code enforcement, uh, showing county. We, but on our side, if we need to, we do written warnings and then. By using backing off ordinances, we could prevent negligence on our end. Um, I've talked to prosecutors and the judges saying that they're willing to reduce a thousand dollar fraction if we have to go that route. Um, another option is potentially reach out to showing county. Visualize hasn't been to try to get a limited commission, virtual county gone more because we are already swamped with additional things. Um, but because having ordinance in place that could get forced by totally force me. If you guys already have. We could just piggyback off that to help with. Our force side base.
Thanks.
Man. The ordinances are really, if you kind of, like, the way I look at it is no one knows necessarily that these things are causing the burn and attracting. And if it's brought up in a policy that we can actually start having discussions about it and referring back to it to where everybody's on the same thing.
So right now there are, the ordinances don't exist in our city code, right?
Correct.
Right. Were you suggesting that? We start looking that way?
I would, you know, I'm more of a. Non punitive approach. I would say that if we were to get. Commercial cans taken care of, the residential cans. Then those ordinances are just kind of there to help not revert back in time, you know, and help kind of enforce with a new culture and try to bring.
As a school visiting, notice the difference since they switched with every part of it.
Absolutely. Um, we don't have the bear coming off of that, those bears coming off of that hill all the time. You know. That's the same thing that gay warden. Eleven years ago pointed out to me of how many bears they removed off the back of that hill and. I never understood why until three years ago when I went behind there and it was all that food back there. Single, yeah.
Um, I see superintendent is here, she wanted, I, it looks like you have a couple of thoughts.
I could answer that question.
Yeah.
Um, so this is a super fun presentation and um. I just want to thank you first of all for providing the there say cans for the school district. We've noticed some enormous improvement. Um, and for those of you who don't know, we actually instituted a composting program. For um, all grades K through twelve. So even with having cans that are like. Identify all organics, we are not having bear trouble. Um, not at all. We're not having bear trouble in Cascade School District at all. We had a very major hotspot behind the middle school and high school. I think we're probably the worst in the city. This probably would hurt, but anyway, um. It's absolutely a game changer and I would recommend it to everybody to it.
Yeah. If you remove those attractants from the landscape, they move on. Those bears are always going to be moving through here. We just need to not report them.
Yeah.
Keep them moving.
All right, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Left everybody a little business cards and stickers and some magnets here too.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thanks, gentlemen.
All right, next is our public hearing. We've got a public hearing on this common interest ownership. And Will, if you'll provide a staff report and then we'll take public comments. Again, just remind people come to the microphone and. Statement, aim and address because it is an official um. Public hearing, so we do need that. And then all comments are addressed to the council. Um, there's not discussion, it's just maybe comments. And then when your public is all done, we'll close the public hearing and move on.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, public that are here today. Um, I'm asking Maggie to do the bulk of the presentation today. I'm here to support her presentation, answer questions. We know there are specific questions and hot topic items related to the public comments and we've tried to touch on that on Maggie's presentation. And will be available after, if there are questions, like I said.
Thank you very much, Council. Uh, this evening, the council is being asked to set the planning commission recommendation to adopt residential condominiums. Also, we only have comment interest department. Within the residential zoning districts of the city of Leavenworth. Uh, this request is in response to the June fifth twenty twenty four hearing of planning commission and with all the commissioners present voted in favor with one abstaining from vote. Um, the twenty twenty four docket for the planning commission prioritized condominiums and unit lot subdivisions as the second item to address this year. The docket states that this is one tool to increase housing ownership and supply and diversity options of housing. It was also recommended in the twenty twenty one housing action plan adopted by resolution nine dash twenty five. On March seventh, twenty twenty four, the city received an individual code amendment request for the condominiums in the residential zone for the city. This item was reviewed during the April and May meetings with the planning commission and then during the June hearing. Primary concerns related to what condos look like and how they are managed and made. There is information in your packet that goes through some common questions and answers. Um, condominiums are currently permitted and exist in the multifamily zone and all the commercial zones in the city. So this is currently an option in those zones. So we're looking at adding that to the RL six and the hard. Uh, an additional public engagement occurred at a special Zoom meeting that was held on May twenty second. This includes additional questions and clarifications, including a few that I wanted to just touch on. Um, number one, what is the benefit of this housing tool? This option to create condominiums from existing single family homes, AUs and duplexes will add smaller dwelling units. Into the market. Um, the smaller dwellings based on market time would have a lower purchase price. This tool also would provide an opportunity for upper value land. Uh, they could use this tool in developing vacant land or retrofitting dwellings, uh, timber, any condos and sell them as part of their low income affordable housing ownership program. Number two, are these units going to be affordable? Uh, it will be a mix. If upper value men uses this option, then those homes would be affordable, um, low income ownership homes. Um, private property could uh. Could be market rate homes as determined by the offer. So there will be that mix. Um, number three, what are these condos going to look like? Uh, they will look like all the existing housing styles that are currently in town. Um, and spilling developments that are designed according to the city's design and dimensional standards for residential dwelling units. So again. Condos are a type of housing ownership, not a building structure. Uh, number four, will this result in displaced housing? It is possible that existing rentals could convert into condos. Um, however, it's not likely condo units are required to be built with fire separation. And for this reason, many of the existing older structures, duplexes and multifamily dwellings uh, in the residential zone districts are not likely to be replicated to these building and fire codes, but. It could. Um, and then number five, what about a relocation assistance program? Uh, the city may, under RCU sixty four ninety six fifty five, have a relocation program. Uh, this will require the landlord to provide up to three months' rent for tenants uh, that need certain qualifications. And also for disabled or elderly persons. If there are specific questions about uh, the relocation assistance program, Director Bestbury is here to answer some of those questions. You. Um. And then I just wanted to note in the packet, you have the staff report with all the attachments with the proposed code changers. They're pretty minor. I don't know if it came across, if we had kind of a. An issue with the conversion, but I don't know if it shows the track changes in. So really it was just some changes to the the district boost chart and to our existing uh, binding site plan code. Um, to add. Add some language, um. Or at least condominium units under uh, chapter sixty four ninety of the R C W. But it's very minor. I apologize if those did completely. Uh, there was also a chapter that says the public works during may require separate connections um. Or immediate private metering or the unit created. Uh, that gives some discretionary uh, ability there to public works during. There are also public comments, so I hope we had a chance to look through them as a few. Um, and then I'm available if you have questions. Director Bestbury is here.
We accept public comments. I know there's people here that would. Would like to make a comment. If you would, please come up to the mic and state your name and. Let us hear from you. Nobody? Come on.
Only person here.
No.
I'll kick it off. Everybody, I'm Caleb Bender. Hi, Joel, can you mic my guest?
Yes.
Nine nine zero bicycle road. Um, I'm the executive director of Upper Valley Mind. Thank you. All right. Hi, for kicking that off. Um, so I would just like to remind the council tonight that condos, as well as providing opportunities for open market condominiumization. Um, of properties, it'll also provide non. Property developers like Upper Valley Mind, the opportunity to build more affordable housing for homeownership. Um, so I'm here tonight to ask you to cast these provisions for condos. Um, so how it would work for Upper Valley Mind. Uh, we have an affordable homeownership program with a portfolio or a housing program with a portfolio of fifty one affordable rentals and homes for purchase in Leavenworth. We have more people interested and qualified to buy our affordable homes on the homeownership side. Uh, than we have available, which means that there are a lot of local people who don't have the opportunity to own a home in the community. Right now, we're in the planning phase for a duplex in the city on a residential lot, on a red. Our six thousand square foot lot. Um, the structure of the duplex we plan to build is already allowed to be built on a city lot, so the structure is allowed outright. Um, but if. I should read it instead of just. Um, we would like to have the option to either run the units or sell them to two different families as part of the homeownership program depending on the community. But as of now, we can only rent both units in a duplex, not sell. What's that individual? This means there will be fewer housing options for local residents. Many of men's own renters have expressed their hopes of being able to purchase a home one day through a program. We would like to expand our housing staff to give them that opportunity. For men, it's not economically feasible to to build one house on one city lot. It would simply require twenty grants or community donations to bring the cost to a price that would be affordable to a local wage earner. Condos would allow us to continue to grow the housing program and provide affordable options to local people for purchase as well as rent. I do want to clarify because we had this question, um, when I talked about this planning mission, that our current rental portfolio, which is duplexes, duplexes and duplexes. Will all stay rentals for the reasons that I mentioned. It's not. Uh, realistic for us. It can. realistic for us to convert those to condos and it also would be great to pass on the maintenance on those to local companies. So that whole portfolio will stay rentals as a future development. So thank you for taking the time. Learning about this important issue and let me just work on this residential areas.
Caitlin, can I ask you a question?
This has
Oh, we can't hear. We're just taking here. Thanks. Yep.
Michelle Green. I have a question.
Who's on?
Okay.
Yeah, on Zoom, Michelle Green is ready to.
Michelle? Please state your name.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Hi, my name is Michelle Green. I'm here on behalf of Prusik Investments, who is the applicant on this text amendment application. First, I wanted to thank the staff for a great job on the staff report and really thorough analysis. We've reviewed all of that, agree with all of the conclusions in the staff report. They've done a great job of going through the code requirements, comprehensive plan requirements and goals. And I think did a great job in explaining the application. From our perspective, one of the primary purposes of seeking this text amendment was primarily to address updates in state law. So the city code, as staff has pointed out, has already allowed for condominium divisions under LMC 1702050, referencing the prior condominium acts, 6432 and 6434. Since that code was adopted by the city, the state legislature has adopted a new act for condominiums that supersedes and replaces those chapters. That's under 6490. And so one of the primary purposes of this application was simply to come into compliance with current state law and reference the correct code. As staff pointed out, these code changes are not about allowing buildings that wouldn't otherwise be allowed, but rather a method of division of land to create the ability for ownership of these individual units. The city still, under these code changes, has oversight and review via the Binding Site Plan process. So there's not sort of this unilateral ability to go and divide land. There's still an oversight process via the Binding Site Plan process. And then secondarily, our purpose is really to increase the affordable housing. As Upper Valley Mend pointed out, there's a significant need for affordable housing within the city limits. There's been a sizable increase of rental units in the last few years. I think somewhere in the neighborhood of 500 units or more of rental units, but there hasn't been an increase in units available for affordable units available for purchase. So this proposed code amendment just really gives the city another tool to to address that issue. So we would ask the council to approve this text amendment as recommended by the planning commission. And thanks, everybody, for their time.
Thank you, Michelle.
You state your address, Michelle, please?
Yes, I'm at Gaten Green Wydenback, 305 Applets Way, Casper, Washington.
Thank you.
The others, let us
come on up.
I'm Caitlin, and we live at 230 Pinegrass. And there's three of us living in that house. And all three of us are very big supporters of affordable housing. We're just so impressed with the community's ability to raise $703 million to fund this, and I see it as a potential to create a model city in Leavenworth, you know? And that if we can do this in a way that really is, allows home ownership as well as rental, it makes a bigger commitment of people to the community. And I know the mission and the vision for Leavenworth is to create, you know, a vibrant community for future generations. And I think in doing that, we want a diverse community. We want to have people living here from all different income strata that can work together. I think we're, it's, to me, it's like you can see what happens to other cities that just allow wealthy people to come in and then it eventually squeezes out all the employees so that they it really creates a big burden for them to live and continue to support it. And I don't think it's a good model for how to run a city. So I'm very proud of Leavenworth for taking this on as a challenge. And I'm very proud of Upper Valley Mend to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Dewitt, 325 Division Street here at Leavenworth. And I would just like to give my support for this proposal. As superintendent of Cascade School, the district has released a few things. One is that we have fewer families who are able to live within school boundaries. And the other is we have fewer staff who are able to live within school boundaries. So one thing I think about is if we have a young kindergarten teacher just starting off their professional career, where are they going to live? And the answer is financially. And that's a shame because they're serving our community and they should at least have the options for here. So I applaud what Caitlin's doing, but also what the city is doing to try to give some more options for our young professionals who serve this community to live.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just call attention to the comments that we received in our email as well and acknowledge all of those folks who couldn't be here tonight but did provide written comment.
Right. Those are part of the record.
Yes.
Anybody else want to speak? Going once? Going twice? Seeing none, we will close this public hearing at 7:51. Public hearing is now closed and we'll go to our resolutions ordinances. And the first action item is ordered at 1695.
Owen?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Owen, both who attended tonight and who provided comment earlier. The planning commission worked hard to consider their comments and meet the state changes in state law. We hope that the city council will take their recommendation and adopt this ordinance.
I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance 1695, Common Interest Ownership.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Ann, seconded by Travis. Discussion.
So I have, you know, I'd like to start the discussion. I think that this is a viable strategy, condos, for what has been spoken. It's just that I have some significant concerns about doing it tonight. Today, doing it now. I just, I've read the letters, I had those same questions. My concern, I guess, is what is to the displacement theory, displacement, not displacement theory, the displacement situation? So we say that we don't think because they're used structures that they're going to be because of the cost to retrofit them up to standards that that's not going to happen. But I would also say we have no guarantees about that, that when people get ready to sell the structure, the money they're going to make on the structure when they sell it would probably come close to judge by price investment to where they would. An older structure could be sold as a condo. And I think that there's a population out there of seniors and people on fixed incomes that would be highly impacted by those older structure sales. Does that mean we don't do it? No, I just think it's, I would like to see a study session on this so I understand this better because at this moment in time for me, I'm not ready to vote, even though I really want condos to happen. I'm not ready at this time with what's in place here to vote yes on it. And I've got, that's one of the questions I have. One of the questions also is families, I'm assuming that families are going to take these even though there's no yard, there's limited bedrooms, but that would probably work for young families or, as Tracy said, young professionals. That would probably be ideal for them. For families, young families, I'm not so sure. I should have a question on that. I'd like to find out if other mountain towns are using this. If this really works, then I would think other mountain towns would be employing this strategy to some extent, myself. And I sat on those public hearings, the discussion with the planning commission, and they were excellent. Lots of good information. So I really value all the hard work they put in for it and the background checks they did. But you know, it wasn't really a five-one decision because Brian Cray wasn't there. And as far as I get from Brian Cray, he was, he's not in favor of that at this point. So actually, it's a five-two thing. You know, in reality. And I really value Brian's perspective. That's all I'd like to say right now. I'm sure the folks would like to say something.
Yeah, I kind of go along with the lines of Zeke's feelings. I'd like to see some more discussion, maybe another study section before we vote tonight.
I think we're having a discussion about it right now. What is it that needs, I'm trying to understand, Zeke, what what exactly your, your no stance is on this and what other questions do you have? And how do we, how can we discuss that right now? I'm not trying to push this to a vote right now, but there's been you were in on the hearing, you know, you've been on some of these meetings and and I feel like, I'm just wondering where this is coming from now at the 11th hour.
Well, actually, Travis, it's not the 11th hour. I had those same questions at the public hearings, but I never really got an answer. So this isn't
An answer, okay. Okay, well, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll let you finish. Go ahead.
Well, no, yeah, I didn't know you asked those questions. And also to follow up, I didn't know they didn't get back to you. And that, that answers a lot. I didn't know that. When I made that statement, I wasn't aware of that. So totally valid. I get that. I'm going to dial it back on, trying to figure that out right now. That's very valid. You should get those answers. That's very good. That's fair.
Thanks.
Are those things that can be discussed tonight?
Um, I think that what I'd like to see in place before we move ahead with this, Ann, is would probably a more of a an addressing displacement issue. Like, because right now, the city's not required to, if they're at a 50% AMI, and if I understand this right, that most of the people in these condos that might be affected are above that. Okay, so we don't have to have a policy for dislocation or relocation. But I'm thinking we have a higher population who might be in the 100 AMI situation. So I think that, I think the city needs to have something which we don't have right now, and that's one of the things that's holding my, my, you know, I mean, that's holding my affirmation for them, that we don't have a broader spectrum to protect people who are in a higher income level.
So how is that any different than someone, say, renting out their ADU, but then they just decide to sell their house and their ADU? And their renter is then displaced?
I guess because we're trying to promote homeownership in some way. And this is certainly a good tool. I just don't see any need to do this all tonight. This has been sort of expedited to start with. And we take another session to figure this out where we have something in place for those folks who are, one, dislocated at a higher income level. I have a sense that what Brian brought up about folks in town that are living in condos or or structures that could be condominiumized that would not want to see it sold because they can't come up with the money. So then where do they go? That's, that's something that bothers me. And I know the argument is, well, they're not going to, they're not going to be in that situation because they're older structures and people aren't going to aren't going to try and condominiumize them because they, there's too much, retrofitting is too expensive. Well, if they want to sell, we don't have any guarantees on that, and I don't see a need to rush through that until we know a better safety net for them in case they do get sold. In case somebody goes, well, I'm going to sell this structure anyway. I'm going to make this much more money on it now that I'm going to sell it as a condo. I'll eat, I'll eat the cost of retrofitting it. And so these folks are, they can't, they can't buy it, then they're, they're out.
Yeah, I'm okay.
So that's, that's what I'm reasoning at this point.
Go ahead.
I have a different perspective on reading the thing about this. I brought this up a couple of meetings ago that I have a strong sense of the environment. And I also brought up to this council and staff that I've been disturbed by the lack of of, of consideration given for vegetation, for green space in city lots. We don't have that in our code at all right now. This is how much we have that. So, you know, for instance, I think Prusik was online. I don't know if they still are, but when they built the place on Stafford, that they want to sell this condos, the place that was for $3 million. That place now, if you look at it, basically is just a lot without trees. And so I actually have been thinking about this a lot because I have this wildlife habitat yard and all that. And I think that existing large trees are a critical component of our ecosystem, our city ecosystem, our neighborhood ecosystem. And I think that there's habitat all through our valley. I have 25 species of songbirds in my yard. And, you know, some people don't care about this. They don't care about the environment. They don't care about the animals that live here. They don't care that there's certain creatures and certain ecosystems in the valley, but I happen to, so I want to speak about it. And I also, people sometimes stop me and say they care, so I want to represent them. There's habitat for songbirds, hawks, mammals. I've got 10 mammals, tons of mammals in our backyard. And I think we have to factor the environment into our code amendments, and that's another reason to wait. Because as we continue to say that lots can be smaller and smaller, that people, more people can own a piece of land in whatever way we do that, we have made no concession whatsoever for preserving the ecology and ecosystem of our, of our neighborhoods. Along with that is the heat, the runoff that goes into the river, the lack of wind that could blow through if you have high dense structures. And I think that it's important. I think this is a global issue. And the fact that Leavenworth makes no consideration for it in our planning commission codes, I don't think that's where we should be at. And so I would like to see, I mean, like I said, maybe I'm the one that cares about this, but I would like to see a way better conversation about this. This is something that other towns respect and do something with, and I'd like to see us give a nod to it and start to talk. So that's a reason for me that I'd like to wait. I have three different points I want to make tonight, and that's my first. Thank you very much.
The, the only thing I would say in response to that is that might be a very valid point, but it doesn't address the fact that this isn't about what can get built. This is about taking what's already allowed and just dealing with the ownership of it.
I think I disagree with you. I think that it's about what can get built in the future and the motivation for people to build something that can be condominiumized because builders will make one of them. So it offers a layer of incentive to build on a lot where three different families, for instance, could live, or perhaps four, whereas before they might not have been incentivized in the same way. Because if condos were sold, they could be sold for more. So I don't agree with you, actually.
Well, but I'm just saying, no, but the fact is, these are
Yeah, let's not argue about it. I agree with you. And this is the
The fact is that, that those units can be built. The question is, is it ownership?
I'm going to try one more time to make my point. The units can be built. I completely agree with you. This may incentivize people to build more units in a particular way because they can sell it for more. And as we've said in here many, many times, in the planning commission and in here, builders are motivated by their bottom line. In the planning commission and in here, builders are motivated by their bottom line. And I'm saying it's a factor in bottom line. Those are the conversations that I've had with people who built. So we don't have to agree, but that's how I feel about it.
I too do not want to move ahead tonight, and my excuses would probably differ. I'll try to pick out a couple of them here. I feel like Leavenworth is a sausage and we're being stuffed overfilled. And as a result of that, people in single family homes bought it, bought their home as a single family home. Because they didn't want to be, you know, that's where they wanted to be, where there was some space, some green space, like um Rona talks about. Um, I also wondered, um, if a condo was built. And they put in, you you know, put in uh the low income kinds of things. Then can the builder use the multifamily tax exemption program and not have to pay his property taxes on those? Ones that are affordable for the twenty year period and the rest of us are paying his taxes along with our own.
Well, that is, that's a question.
Yeah, um, I did, I did email you a little bit about that. The multifamily tax. Accident only applies in the commercial and industrial zoning.
But still, we're gonna pay their taxes no matter where they are in the city limits, right?
They have to apply for the program and the city council would have to approve it. So. It it go through quite a bit of scrutiny and the city council at that time would make that determination. But the multifamily tax exemption is is intended to provide low income housing in the commercial zones. So those could be combined together.
Okay, um, let's see if I can pick up one other thing here. Let someone else talk and I'll see if I can come up with my another short idea.
Yeah, I have thoughts. Um, I'm gonna preface this with saying, I realized that this is, there's been a lot of discussion bringing us up to this point. And um, I have not been in the room for many of these discussions, so I've. My perspective um is is likely colored by that. So um. If 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 some of these comments are made in ignorance, uh please forgive me and disabuse me of my of such, but. I think this is a. I think this is a layered thing. I I recognize that this could be, that this is an incredible tool to be used in a very specific way. By Upper Valley Mend and that this can help them and the people that they serve tremendously. I get that it that in a perfect world, this could help your teachers and the nurses that I work with. And people that that are looking for a way into homeownership here in the valley. My concern arises with the fact. Where the best of intentions may collide with unintended consequences and those unintended consequences. Deal with the fact that we live in an inherently irrational market and that the market always finds its level. And while I would. Every decision that I make, I would like to make it in service of making sure that people. Who who should live here and need to live here can live here. And um. If these units, it provides an an opportunity and an on rent for that kindergarten teacher or for that. That nursing assistant to find a path into homeownership here in the Leavenworth. I am absolutely all for it. But if this is also a way really for. Recent retiree to cash out their stock options in Kirkland for the tech that they work for and to come here and to buy. That would essentially not only ace that person who was living in the ADU out of their their residence. But also it would displace them. Um, I have concerns about that. And I realize. It's all theoretical. And I guess that's where, when Zeke was mentioning, if we had proof of concept where this type of, where. This type of code change actually was a net positive in irrational markets like our own, I would love to see it. Because I really want to help mend out and I want to give those folks a leg up into finding homeownership. And I also don't want to do something that in hindsight, six months or a year down the road, we go, yeah, we didn't think about that. That's my concern and I don't, and it's again, it's out of the best of intentions because I want people to have that leg up and in. That's why if we have proof of concept, if we have instances where municipalities in irrational markets like our own adopted this. I want to see it. And if we're at the vanguard of this and and we're the first one really to to take this step. Great, then let's acknowledge it and move forward. But I'd love to see that proof of concept.
We we had that question at the study session last time.
And as I said, I wasn't available for that study session. So my apologies. Can you can recap me on that?
Yeah, we talked about how that this tool is primarily a Washington state tool. It hasn't been utilized. You had asked me to look at Van Van or some other tourist town. Um, as I recall from the previous one, but it's just not utilized in those jurisdictions. I didn't see it in any of their code. And I did find this article that talked about how it's primarily a Washington state tool. Any case, but condominiums do provide an opportunity to provide lower. Cost of entry. So to that extent, it is going to provide more housing units and a better cost of entry. Is it tested in other markets? Everywhere they've had condominiums, it's been tested. And our irrational market, um, when we were talking about the inclusionary zoning. Two is one of the other tools that the planning commission is still working on. You know, our irrational market that we have is going to be beneficial to that. Because it does make that land value. High enough that people are still willing to build even though it's more expensive. The same is true with the condos. Yeah, people are gonna be more willing to build duplexes and condominiumize them because our land values are high. I don't think they're gonna be converting older ones as much because the cost is high. And when you've been renting it at a lower rate, you just don't have that same available resource that a developer would. Any case. It's really tough if you want everything to be vetted out by another jurisdiction. There's multiple jurisdiction like this. No town this small that brings in this much tourism. That, you know, has this much demand on our infrastructure and our schools and our police force and. And the fire district. We need to have the housing for those service industries and we need to have an option that allows for it. Condominiums is the cleanest, simplest, and it has the potential for the most immediate impact. Because we already have these structures built. And that impact is at zero cost to the city. At zero cost to the landowner because they're already built units. So we don't have to give up density. We don't have to add more infrastructure. Everything's already here. The appearance of the buildings is gonna be the exact same. It's just an ownership question.
Lilith, when you say they're already built, you mean, you mean new structures that somebody else is gonna build, right?
No, I mean, it'll, this tool has the biggest impact of using our current structures. And providing new housing.
So like there's combination pictures with the ADU that's separate or attached.
In the staff's report, yes. Those are options where they could be condominiumized. The most common option would be to detach a single family, a detached ADU. That's the easiest to condominiumize. Because they didn't, they didn't, they already have made the fire separation, so they don't have to accommodate that at this time.
So those that separated use are you are retrofitted for the fire standards?
If they're newer ones, they are. Yes, our wooly.
Was five years.
We're very fortunate as a community. We have so many advantages besides the beautiful area. We have just a wonderful resource of individuals. Who committed themselves to tourism, to nature and the environment. This tool just gives those individuals an opportunity to buy. We'll we'll never be able to determine who buys them. I can't stop the Microsoft. You know, um, I was looking at buying a house this year, trying really hard. And there's a huge difference. And I I mean, I can afford, I qualify for a ridiculous amount, but mentally I afford. These these units that are potentially gonna be created. Those are the ones that really work for workforce here.
As I'm sitting up here, I'm I'm kicking myself because I didn't do this. I'm wondering if anyone else did this. Did anyone have. A hypothetical conversation with a realtor here in town about, okay, the ADU on West Street. Let's say it went up for sale. What do you think they could get for it?
I did that. I didn't, I didn't talk to a realtor. I went out on Zillow and I went out on Mensei and I did all that. So this is math and science night for me. I talked about the environment and I have the math. And and it's it's quite, it's a question that I have because um. When we talk about, we we're not talking about affordable anymore. We're talking about more affordable, right? So right now, there is, let me just read this and then jump around. Median household income was seventy two thousand in twenty twenty two. So let's be generous. Let's say it's eight eighty thousand dollars now. That's a median income household. And as I was reading on your site, correcting me if I'm wrong, we go twenty percent below that before people can consider it. We we go to eighty percent AMI and a hundred percent AMI this year, it's a hundred thousand. Okay, so so there's there's some numbers. And um. So according to Zillow, Zillow's affordability calculator, a household is defined as least two people. If they make eighty thousand, they can comfortably afford a. Two hundred fifty thousand dollar home. They can maybe stretch up to three hundred fifty thousand dollars at the very end of their limit. So I went out and I saw what condos were for sale. And there is a condo for sale. The cheapest one I saw was four hundred thousand dollars. It's six hundred fifty square feet. It has one bed and one bath and it's older, so it's kind of a fixer up. The average price is five hundred fifty thousand dollars for a condo unit. And it has two bedrooms, two baths. It's about thirteen hundred square feet. So according to Zillow, you'd have to make a hundred twenty thousand dollars to purchase that condo, which is the average kind of condo. Now, maybe people, I I've lived in tiny spaces. I used to live in house trucks, so I maybe I'm the one to ask, but six hundred fifty square feet. For four hundred thousand dollars, you know, I self, teachers might want that, other people might want it. But that's a tiny bit of space for quite a bit of money in a condo. So that's what we're looking at um in terms of prices. And that's why I question if this is gonna create affordability. I think Man has a different deal with it and I wish we could make that a separate case and we didn't have to blanket, you know. Off prices for our community and they could have some kind of different issue because these are not affordable prices. That's what, and I can give you this if you want. I did the research today so that we could talk about it. You do, man.
Well, it's just, it goes with what Clint's saying. We're in an irrational market. We're not in a market where, and. The problem is, there is nothing to intercept that irrational market. Unless we find different tools than what we've been standardly using. And that's. One of the tools is get those units smaller. And again, what we do know is that smaller unit is gonna go for less than. And it allows for, again, the subsidies that men can bring along with that. To get that down, to make that affordable. But. A smaller unit, we know, is going to be less expensive than a larger.
Sure, six hundred fifty square feet is four hundred thousand dollars. That's less expensive. But I just want to be super clear that that doesn't mean it's affordable.
Right. No, not classically affordable. We don't have anything classically affordable and won't until we subsidize. Until we get a funding stream that can buy down those. And that's what it's gonna take.
So the thing I'm struggling with is this is a great strategy for men. They can make this work the way we want. We've intended it to work. They can make it work. My concern along the other side of it is in the free market. With the dislocation thing that I don't think has been happening very well is. Anybody can buy them. So what is to stop them as usually be snapped up for second homes at that price? Why wouldn't you come over here, buy this thing for six hundred fifty feet or four hundred thousand dollars if you've got that for a second home? And and so, you know.
What's stopping people now? What's stopping people? Nothing is stopping people. That's the point. Nothing is stopping.
Because it's not available. It's not available yet. This is making it available.
This is putting it on the market. It's not there. Like, we're gonna, we're gonna put it there. But I'm not, and not even that, I would go for putting it there. I'm just don't want to do it tonight. I want some more time process this thing. I don't know why there's a rush. This hasn't been on that long. I know it's important. I know it's critical, but I think another session of sort of talking through this on. Folks that do this, if they get dislocated, how do we handle it? You're gonna clean, gonna have them hanging, who've lived there all that time? You know, or. You could make something there work better. I, that would certainly change my mind.
You know what? You know who I'd love to 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 talk to? I'd appreciate the work that you put in there. I'd love to talk to an assessor. I mean, I'd love to talk to someone like Sherry Fariver. I'd love to talk to a realtor. Get get Cam West in here. Get, sorry, Cam, if you're listening. I don't want to call out your name. Get someone. Love you, Cam. Um, get, get a real, get a subject matter expert in here who could actually say, you know what, in real world. This would go for this. So we have an idea of, okay, you know what, that teacher can't get that. Or whoop, that's a retiree property. Nothing against retirees, but there are lots of opportunities for them. We're not talking about opportunities for them. And Carl, we're on the same page. We want to, we want to provide those opportunities for those folks. I just want to ask the questions to make sure that they're answered, and I realize there is no sure thing. But I'd like to get that extra information.
I also, um, I would like to see either a workshop or a public forum or something where we can get people. In a room, they can find out what's going on. I can't tell you how many times a week I hear the, you know, I try to invite somebody to come to a meeting. Or hear something, and they they figure that they say that the city doesn't care what they think. And I I would like to see a way that we could bring people together and and uh, you know, invite them to a workshop. Or whatever, probably would, hopefully it would, this room would be too small. But where people could hear for themselves and um and then support decisions. And I think you would get the support. But right now, people don't think, they, any comment they make, the city doesn't care. They don't want to hear them. And I admire Brian speaking out um in the planning commission meeting. And he, I think, is pretty much saying the same thing I did.
So I think one of the things that hasn't been brought up tonight is the discussion of. Opportunity and potential missed opportunity for our community members with regard to this topic. This is an incredible opportunity for community members who don't have the opportunity yet to become homeowners. And they have been renters for one year, ten years, fifteen years, and they would just love the opportunity to get into the market. And somehow start building equity for themselves. And I'm not talking specifically about men's program. I'm talking about people who wouldn't necessarily qualify for men's program, but are stuck in the middle that can't qualify for. Any other ho- housing opportunity in our market currently. And this creates that middle ground for people. I love that men would be able to use this program, but this isn't just about men. This is about our middle income people. Who don't have an opportunity to get into our market because there aren't enough tools in place for them to have that type of opportunity. And this creates a really great additional tool for them to access. It's another opportunity for them. And and honestly, if if we need to meet and discuss this further in the coming weeks. If that means we'll ultimately get this across the finish line, I'm a hundred percent supportive of this. But this, if this is just kicking the can down the road, I'm very disappointed.
It's not kicking the can down the road for me because I mean, again, application in the real world. We all know that there are real estate companies out there where their entire business plan is. Dedicated to selling Leavenworth to folks over on the west side who have disposable income. And. Knowing what they know, I mean, all I want to know, all I want to do is talk to a subject matter expert and say, okay, how is this? How is this, how would a realtor who that's, that is their business plan, how are they not absolutely licking their chops and revving up their patented marketing machine? Revving up their patented marketing machine to go to the west side. And say retirees, guess what? You don't have to worry about shoveling snow. You know, it's here for you. You have an HOA.
Yes and no though, because a lot of, a lot of what we're talking about is converting existing single family residences and or a portion of. Or existing detached ADUs. And so you're gonna, you're gonna, through a bounding site plan, you're going to parse off. Those two units into separate ownership, but you have to create an HOA because you jointly own the land underneath.
Right.
And, and you're not just gonna. Sell off the ADU and, and that ADU no longer has to deal with the land that it's on. Like you're in a homeownership together and HOA together and you get to dictate who is managing. All of the other responsibilities associated with the whole property. So I, I don't think that this is necessarily that. If you were, if you were buying into, you know, a, a big condo development.
Right.
A unit there, yes, you're most likely in your homeowner's dues going to have. Fees that cover those sorts of things. And this is an opportunity for that as well. You have to have that arrangement and people have to pay into that fund. In order to cover those things, but most likely that's not this. This is the person in the backyard who's rent, who's renting the ADU. That someone else owns and this could potentially provide them an opportunity to own that ADU rather than just perpetually rent it. And everybody's still doing the snow removal together and everybody's, you know, still doing their garbage to, you know. Payments together and, and those sorts of things.
Perhaps that was too specific example that I gave and I understand.
And I, I, I mean, to, to your point about, you know, like big developers coming over here, I mean. The likelihood of that happening when say, you know, if I built an ADU in my backyard and I decided to condominiumize it and sell it to somebody. A developer's not going to buy my house. I'm not going anywhere. It gives me an opportunity. To provide a housing opportunity for someone else on my property. But, but a developer's not going to be buying my property.
If you're altruistic or if you're looking at making the greatest amount of money possible on your investment, which most people do. They will find the opportunity to, to maximize that investment. All I'm saying is. I would love to hear some, I would love to have that conversation with someone who deals with that, the market in the real world so that. What we are intending is what actually has a chance of happening.
Or at least closer to the mark, because right now I've just got. So this isn't kick the can down the road. This is like, I want some more time processing. Maybe the next study session, huh, whenever we can get a hold of somebody. When I get those answers, at least as close as I can, I know I'm not going to get it so finally. You know, it's still going to be available for folks to buy them for second homes. There's the way you can stop that, but. I would like to uh. Be sure of a, a relocation plan and I would like to also. Like Clint was saying, what are these, what are their perspectives and how they look at this and who's gonna, who is gonna take this and? You know, I think. We're gonna end up condominiumizing units here. It's just. I just, I want to feel better about it than I do right now voting for it. That's all. That's why.
Okay, so do. We want to take this off the table for now. We've discussed it a lot. We know there's going to be more. Do we want, is the mover and the second willing to take it off or do you want to vote? Because you've moved and seconded.
I can withdraw my motion.
You willing to withdraw your second?
Yes. Yes, we do need to discuss it further. We, we do, we do. I, I came into this with, with uh. Kind of some ideas of my own and, and actually through this, this discussion, uh, there's some really good points that are raised and it's, it's, it's appropriate. Let's, let's. Let's keep talking about it.
Let's put it on a, on a pre-session.
Well, it's Travis's property. He's renting already a condo when it's only two structures down.
I was thinking that too. I was thinking that too.
And somebody owns this condo and he's just renting it from.
Yeah, I understand.
Can we talk about this format of the conversation? I liked what Sharon said about some kind of forum. What, and I liked what you said about having a subject matter expert. You know, I, there's. If, there are a lot of layers here, so I'm not sure that a regular study session is the. Maybe that's the spot. I, I've been in council very long. Maybe that's all the only thing you can do. What does Sharon mean or what, what?
Well, I would like the committee to know what's going on. I'm, I, I'm not thinking they're gonna, I'm not. Saying that because I think they're all going to be against it. They've just given up on the council. They really don't. They, they just.
I don't get that.
I get it all the time.
I don't get that sense either, especially with all of the emails that people provided in support of this.
How many emails? Not a hundred and there's two thousand people that live here.
Well, you're not gonna get two thousand, no matter what.
Why can't we try? I don't know. We could certainly get more than ten or twelve.
We're here every other Tuesday.
At the best hall meeting, last best hall.
Yeah, at the community engagement night, I had a table to talk about this. So you have the two planning committees to talk about this. We have a special planning meeting on May twenty-second to talk about this. So there have been a lot of opportunities for public.
I know, but he showed up. Nobody.
We had two hundred people at the best hall.
Pardon me?
Community engagement night and we're over two hundred people.
The thing about that is though, that it's not, it's set up to learn, but it's not set up to. Be a community and speak about. Your feelings out loud and be it all in group and it's, you know, it's not set up that way. I don't, I, maybe that's what Sharon's talking about.
It's informational and then the planning commission meetings are intended to be the. Discussion walkthrough and their hearing.
Because we have a public hearing and we have what? Pretty much the same eight people or nine people at the public hearings and we're not seeing anybody different.
How do we get people here? What's the suggestion? How do we get them here? What's the suggestion?
Yeah, no, that's a big joke in the planning world. It's the same, same old people showing up with the same conversation. How do we invite more of the community or diversify our comments so we can really understand what the community's meaning? Remember that this particular item. Besides being mandated under state law. Um, and vetted through the state process. Uh, is also in your housing recommendation action plan. So this item has been on the ticket board for years. And discussed in various ways, so. We're not hearing a lot from a ton of people, but we're hearing good voices and we're hearing a mix of comments, which is really great. Um, and so.
How many? Do we even have? Twenty-five? People that send emails or anything? We, we don't.
Well, I've sent it out to more than a hundred people, but it's. It's not always the number of people. It is the quality of comments we, and, and having a diversity of people coming in and talking.
Yeah.
So thi- this particular item has had a broader range of input than I've seen in other items that have been brought up.
I physically brought my neighbor across the street to um. The high school during um, the election to listen to the candidates speak and she has never had anybody. From city council ever come over and invite her to something like that. I, I, I mean, it's handholding and let's get some people here. Sharon, neighbors? Let's get some people here, like into our meet, one meeting. If we also bring one extra person. To the next meeting and fill one extra chair, like we're, we're making progress, right? I mean, like we need to basically just invite our neighbors who we know in the community to come. Sharon, you know more people than I do by far. Let's, let's get butts in seats.
So for clarity, if I could, Mayor. I, I really want to be very clear on how this is being um. Postponed, but discussions in part for the planning commission because we have had the last several planning commission. Members who've. Left their posts. It was partly due to the frustration of not having things move. And, and I, I just want to be sure and clear with them what the expectation here is. So you'd like us to come back to the. Study session, bring a realtor to talk about home prices and values and other questions related to this type of land division. I'm also hearing a, a. You want that discussion to have a component of the relocation program or possible relocation program. Uh, Roma, you want to talk about vegetation, which I, I do think is a separate topic. But those are the three primary items to discuss. Have I missed anything? Co- oh, the realtors for cost. Yeah, yeah.
You covered it for me, both.
Okay. Although I would ask, well, I have something to say to Travis, dude. Travis, are you still there?
Yeah, sorry. My head, my headphones are going in and out. Sorry.
I, I was gonna say that you're right about just inviting people. Um, Jim Mayhew wanted to talk to me. He's running, he's a Democrat running for state representative. And I said, yeah, let's talk. And I just invited people and ten people came over to my yard and we just met with Jim Mayhew. And they were interested, although a number of them said they don't think the city listens to them. You know, I hear it all the time. So it's a little bit more of a challenge to get people in these chambers, but I'm willing to try and I think I can do it. So, I, you know, why don't we all bring three people? I, I like your idea. It's how, it's how I've built my diverse groups is just by inviting people. So anyway, I think that idea. Uh, but that it wasn't, I got, I got sidetracked. Um. Oh. Do, does it have to be you that sets it up a little? I mean, could we find a realtor? Does it have to be through the planning commission? Oh, and Jim Yakin, by the way, said that so many times when he was in Snow Hall me, the planning commission. Did their work and then stuff was sent back to them far more times than here. So, you know, hopefully your planning commission can, you know, weather having one or two things said, you know, they have to go back. He said it was more common than what happens here. I don't think it happens. But anyway, I don't know who puts that meeting together.
Yeah, we, we work on that meeting. If you have somebody you'd like to attend, who can. You can certainly reach out to them yourself, but they should be in touch with. I feel is always in charge of the study session agenda.
And can the housing action committee also attend? I think uh, Karen's on that. Can they be part of these conversations since we appointed them to talk about housing stuff? Would that be okay?
The purview for their um. Committee is not really looking at regulations. We tried to separate those two. If you guys remember when the housing action. The city council housing committee. Outlined the purpose and intent for the housing action committee. They wanted to keep it separate from the planning commission activities so they didn't overlap. So the housing action committee, I think it's great that they want to communicate about their thoughts on regulations and. Uh, I believe they did that recently with you. Uh, and I would encourage them to continue to do that on an individual basis, but. Uh, the planning commission is tasked more with the code draft, drafting and hopefully. The housing action committee will have a project to build and they come from that.
I'm not, I'm in, I'm not such a silo person. I like to just sort of mush everybody up and let them talk. So I'm not, that's not really my style, but I see.
Well, I could encourage them to attend and participate.
I mean, they could attend.
Coming on issues around housing.
I mean, they, they show an interest in housing, so.
Yeah.
There, we need people. There's people. But I'm just trying to keep their agendas focused so they can achieve a goal. So are we continuing this public hearing to date, time, place, certain things?
Not the public hearing. We closed the public hearing.
Thank you.
Move our action item to another date.
Right.
Okay, undetermined at this time.
Yeah.
And so is that the only action item we have? We don't have anything else on the agenda except. Talking about this issue.
But would it, it wouldn't be an action at that point.
The study session you know.
It would be a study session. Information. So is another session without sitting up here and all that or?
Just a thing where people could sit anywhere, ask questions. See some pictures, like the pictures of the um. Uh, co- uh, having a. Uh, HOA, you know, on a thing on your property and all that. So that they're seeing everything and under, able to understand it.
You're asking about another workshop.
That's what I was thinking, a workshop. Like, I said, we had a discussion with a pool at Phil's Fest Hall.
So maybe not a study session, but have a workshop and include those items and have the public attend.
Hmm.
Yeah, I don't, there's nothing that would preclude it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I, that's what I was, make, make it more open, more inclusive things. Cause I noticed that the, the fest hall that was. At the pool discussion. Things, it took a while, but things did get clarified. People had some real misconceptions and they did get filtered out and, and. I think there's.
There will be miscon, there will be misconceptions on this. I think this is tread lightly or be very clear. You know, what a condo is and what we're speaking about, because I think, you know. I think that this can be very muddied and, and that misunderstood what a condominium. Solution is or tool is.
Well, I think if you take the time to answer the questions that night, uh, that's what I left with full discussion was there's. Plenty of those, but they, that got boiled down. And she had a whole other. Group take off as far as the pool advocates just because of that meeting, so. I think there's.
Yeah.
So.
They did a great job. They did a good job explaining it in the PowerPoints and the, but. Yeah, they're professionals and, yeah.
Will this city council object to having it prior to the study session or do you want it as a separate evening activity?
I'd rather it was separate evening activity.
A different day?
Yep.
I'd be open to that and, and I'd be open to putting. Something on the study session sooner rather than later. I'm, I'm serious in that I don't want this to be a kick the can down the road thing. This is. This, and I hope that the.
Could the workshop be the study session?
We have a full session planned for the next one. That's why I was.
The earliest you're gonna talk about this is gonna be September, more likely October, November.
If it's studies.
If it's a study session.
No.
Workshop. I'm in support of a workshop.
And I do want to point out that we have four. Evening visioning sessions scheduled for the.
September.
For September and October. So there's gonna be a lot of night commitments this fall.
Well, could we do it in two weeks at four o'clock? Instead of the five thirty. Study session, so it's not impacting the study session.
Hmm.
Be harder to get people.
Yeah, you want to get people there.
Right, yeah. It's summer. People on vacation.
I just think we, we go for a workshop, we pick a time, it's separate from the study session. And we make it at an hour like six. And. There's our best shot and we make sure as councils, we invite everybody we can. And put it out there and. That way we've made the effort, we had the discussion.
And how fast do you want to have that meeting?
Two weeks, can we do it in two weeks? Or four weeks?
Two, three weeks. Two or three.
Okay.
So we'll maybe do it on Wednesday in two weeks. We'll look at the calendar and send that out.
Okay.
I have one more suggestion that might help with the, the stuff with the planning mission. Why don't we talk about the, what's it called? Small unit lot thing.
Unit lot division.
Yeah, why don't we talk about that at the same time?
Well, it, it's gonna be a separate ordinance.
I think that would muddy the waters.
I think that would muddy the waters too.
It's, people might want to understand that too. Okay.
We can have a workshop about that too, if, if at that point it's deemed necessary. Just to bring everybody along. I don't think that there's an issue with that, but let's not muddy the condo conversation.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think um. It, the invite has to be. Sounding like someplace they want to go. And not RCW, QOZ or anything like that. And if it's. You know, it's, it's a workshop to come and learn about um. Talking about condos in the city, talking about blah, blah, you know, like that and just make it sound like they want to come and. And maybe they don't even know what's going on in these, you know, that. We, we want input. We want community input. We care about what you. What you want, what you think, what your questions are.
Thank you for the marginal awareness.
Absolutely.
And they'll come if they care. Huh? Well, they'll come if they.
Yeah, if nobody comes, then nobody comes. We'll talk.
We'll talk. All right, we will move on then. We've got those. We've got a action item ten is a quarterly budget treatment.
Thank you, Mayor. So council, this is a very small quarterly budget event compared to your last one. Um, pretty much every item on here is actions that you've taken over the last quarter. So. I'll take any questions if you have any. Thanks for coming, Pete.
Yeah, thanks, Pete.
Questions?
Questions?
I would entertain a motion.
Let me see, city council moves to adopt. When it's sixteen ninety-six for the budgetment.
Second.
Moved by Zeke, seconded by Anne. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Pass it unanimously. Action item eleven, ordinance sixteen ninety-seven. This is an ordinance to make the street closures for the pedestrian plaza into our ordinance and. So I'll be.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh, at your May fourteenth uh, study session of this year, you discussed codifying in the Leavenworth municipal code.
Uh, resolution eighteen dash twenty-two. Which indefinitely closed portions of Front Street and A Street to vehicular traffic with some exceptions for deliveries and emergency vehicles. Uh, staff discussed with the council, the plan to replace the orange barricades that were installed in twenty twenty with more permanent ballards. Um, deliveries would still be allowed daily between six AM and eleven AM. For council consideration tonight is ordered sixteen ninety-seven, which modifies chapter ten point oh five local traffic regulations. And associated chapter twenty-one point oh nine point oh three zero definitions. Um.
When are the bullet ballers coming? Do we have them?
The holes are drilled.
Yeah, so half of the new ballers. So many of the ballers exist. Um, let me pull up the, uh, let me share with you. Steve, it goes, one second. This is the Ballard map that we showed. There. Uh, this is the Ballard map that we showed at the last, uh, at that study session. So up here by Gustav's. Those ballards, those are new ballards. They did not exist in that location previously. Um, the rece, most of the receivers have been installed. Um, I know they get half of them last week. I thought that the project was going to be finished last week, but I haven't gotten an update from operations about when.
Yeah, that's based on concrete.
Concrete? Oh, is that one? Um, so those are, those have been received and installed. Over, over on. The east side of Ninth Street, we have receivers for narrow gauge ballards. Um, we have ordered, uh, larger ballards that will, uh, be the same size as our, as our other ones. Um. The staff has told me that they've seen cars actually mount and be hung up on those smaller gauge. Ballards in that location, so it'll be safer to have the larger ballards there. Um. So that's where they'll be. They'll be on. Front Street at Highway two. Um, these eco blocks will be supplemented at some point. That is the, uh. You can see my curve? Yeah, there you go. That's the Leavenworth Co- Hotel Parking Lot.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Ballards on Eighth. These will be open for deliveries because we do have a loading zone on Eighth here. And then ballards, um, on Front Street and Ninth, both east and west and, uh, and on Tenth. So what this, um, ordinance does is it codifies the closure of the street. The resolution didn't codify that. It was simply a resolution. And, uh, this codifies it. It does lead the, uh, open and close hours of the street to signage. So our, whatever sign posted, so that doesn't need to go back, um. To you if, if it's decided to change the hours, uh, if they're not convenient for our downtown businesses and deliveries.
And where the blue ones, ballers?
Blues are, are called eco blocks.
Pardon me?
The blue ones, the blue dots are eco blocks.
Okay, so that the parking.
To keep people from the parking lot who are going to park from coming onto Front Street.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's, those are in front of those two parking lots, that, that front of the street.
Do you have a question about this?
Of course.
Um. Shannon. Um, I, I was thinking about how, um. Deliveries were such an issue and I think this will take care, you know, just the sloppiness of having cars on Front Street or trucks and stuff on Front Street. So this should take care of that and I feel, feel good about it. Yeah. Okay. And then the other thing was being on the parking committee, the idea that the consultants actually suggested, which was. And maybe we can do it in the future anyway, but to have that road open starting at the Gustav's. That comes down to increase parking traffic. So. We could change the code if we wanted to open it in the future.
That, it would require a code. Yeah, it would require a read, so amending what you're adopting, hopefully adopted, adopted tonight.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so it depends on that committee and Shannon. So I wonder if you have thoughts about that. Should we? Should we make sort of bill it in now that we don't know about that or just pass it?
No, we've actually talked to that, about that in committee and it was during a couple of committee meetings that you weren't able to attend. And the, and the committee determined that the city council's direction of keeping all of that closed is best for the community. Okay.
Yeah, the consultant offered to remove that from the action plan after receiving comments from us and from the committee. Um, we asked him to leave it in there because it was their recommendation. Uh, we had provided that in, um, and we didn't want it to seem like it was just disappeared, just that didn't like it. So that, that recommendation remains, but, uh, I don't believe that there's a majority of council that would like to reopen Front Street at this point in time.
Yeah, including that section. Okay, I just wanna check.
So I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance sixteen ninety-seven, amending the Leavenworth Municipal Code, Chapter ten point zero five local traffic regulations. And adding provisions for roads closed to vehicular traffic in Chapter twenty-one. Point nine zero point zero three zero comment definitions.
Checking.
Okay, moved by Anne, seconded by Shane. Other discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, if this passes tonight, is it possible? And if so, how quickly can we remove the? The road signs that are up? Like, I think there's a do not enter or there's a speed limit sign. There's some, some. Government signs that are on Front Street that aren't necessary because. There's no vehicle traffic. Are we able to remove those or is that a state thing?
Most of them have already been removed, Travis. I walked that area, uh, with, with Rick, um, and Shannon. That was. March or April? Okay.
Concerning, but four directional, I think it would be. Traffic blocking in, in the direction or playing. So those days still exist.
But, yeah, yeah, I understand where there's.
You see, Travis, if you see, um, other signs that we may have missed or other signs that you believe that should be removed, just, um, take a picture, let me know its location. We'll discuss it internally.
No, I, it's, yeah, totally. Yeah, I just, yeah, it sounds like you guys are on it. I just noticed some, it's been, it's been. A while since I've not noticed them.
Yeah, we did.
It just bugged me, it bugged me because we, yeah.
Yeah, we've removed quite a few of those signs that were, that, that were not needed.
Yeah, okay, great. Thanks.
Other comments? Did you wanna make a comment?
Me? No.
No.
Bob, Ron Duncan, was that too funny for us?
He just didn't see anybody coming up to the podium.
And I feel like I'm stepping in front of a freight train with, uh, the front street closure. The, uh, street closed in COVID and then didn't reopen in anticipation of, uh. This plaza. And I just wanna. Uh, last council meeting, uh, I think Debbie, a business owner, raised her concern about the business effect, uh. Businesses do suffer because the people can't get in there as, as easily and, and that I don't think is addressed. I think. The whole point of Front Street is to draw business in, not bring children into play in the street, uh, which I think some of the, uh. Some of that design concept had, like the splash pad in the middle of the street. But, uh. When Leavenworth transformed into a Bavarian-style community to promote tourism. The city government wisely created a multi-use area. To support festivals while maintaining the original purpose of the city streets, resident access and parking. This was consistent with an era of government that understood the responsibility of managing civic funds and spending them judiciously. As we look at the existing multi-use Front Street area, the Maple Plaza, Gisibo area. They support smaller events without impacting the street. For large festivals on weekends. Historically, the ballers would be installed and the street would be closed. And, uh, from eighth to ninth, but then they would remove them so that during the week citizens could have access to those front street businesses again. Uh, for a small town. And I appreciate Sharon bringing that up at a recent meeting that we need to consider that, you know, is this really what we need in this town? We have a small community. We want to support our residents getting into those same businesses that the tourists flood on the weekends. During the week. We should be able to drive up and get some wine from the wine store instead of having to try and tote it a block to, uh, to get it out of the store. In a small, for this small town, this flexibility, supporting festivals for business. And Front Street access for city residents was brilliant at the time. And far more economical than a single-use plaza that prevents weekday drive-up resident access to Front Street. Sadly, our current era of government, not just in Leavenworth. Favors large projects for single-use infrastructure, but they cannot afford to build without de facto government welfare programs. And cannot afford to maintain without addition, additional government welfare. For a quick check of any city's financial health as you drive into town, just look at some of the visible infrastructure the city is responsible for. City streets and sidewalks. In Leavenworth, we see city streets and sidewalks everywhere in severe disrepair. With our only hope to obtain grants, government welfare, to Band-Aid some of them for a few more years. In this, in this environment. How can it be responsible to build a permanent, single-use pedestrian plaza that we clearly cannot afford? That will have increased maintenance costs that we also cannot afford. In addition to the economic impact to businesses of Front Street closure, I've noted a few other observations. Uh, elderly and disabled Leavenworth residents are prevented from drive-up access to the businesses during the week. Uh, this was critical when my mother-in-law was still alive. Just, let me get messed up here. And my wife still treasures that time shopping in Leavenworth with her mother. Which, under these circumstances, would have been impossible to do. She could not. Get from a car to the store. My wife had to drop her off in front of each store that they went into and then go park. And that's how they were able to see Leavenworth. That's not possible. Uh, with the white sidewalks on both sides of Front Street fully capable of supporting weekday pedestrian traffic. When you spread those pedestrians out all over the street. The downtown area looks uneven, not bright. It doesn't look like, wow, this is a, a place that things are happening. It gets kind of. Dead time. One, in my view, what I've seen, when I go, when I go downtown and, and I'm working down there. Once, uh, tourists, the other, the last observation, once tourists pedestrians are trained on Front Street. But wander aimlessly around the city street. They continue that onto Eighth and Ninth, through the barricades, and they are. Extremely surprised and irritated that there are actually cars using the roadway. Weird and unsafe. I asked the council to rethink the closure of Front Street and consider how previous city councils balanced all interests. With a more economical, flexible, multi-use solution. Please open and restore the historical use of Front Street, both drive-up access and parking. It's, or at least bring it to the people. All the comments that were made during the, uh. Condo. Discussion with. The citizens not being heard. Business owners are not being heard. People don't, the, the Front Street closure just happened. It was snuck in and it just sits there and. And it, and that I hear it a lot, that people can't understand and don't know why the city council doesn't, doesn't hear them. I mean, it'd be great to have a plaza, but why do we need the plaza? How does it benefit us when a multi-use? Uh, would be more prudent for a city to fund. So that was, that's, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ron.
Do you work downtown?
I do.
Oh.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
I guess I have something. So. You know, I'm on the parking committee and I had the surgery and I've been sitting. I missed a couple of them this year. Um, I liked the idea of opening up the street from Gustav's coming down. Um, I think it's super bare there and we could use it. Um, I think traffic flow needs to use it, but anyway. Strangely, um, this new shirt that I just got, I was downtown. And I talked to a business owner there that has several businesses. And she's not happy with the parking situation. Debbie came in, she wasn't happy. And then, just like yesterday. A neighbor of mine, I said, how are you doing? And I said, what's happening downtown? She works downtown. And this is what she wrote me. I said, tell me what, you know, you, you know. She said, the tourists say there's no parking in town. They shouldn't have taken away Front Street parking. The town will die because people have hard time finding spots. The scary dollar is normal for two hours. The parking is worse than most cities. No handicap parking. The area lots behind the library and pool charged, dah dah dah. Anyway, here's this, there's like seven more comments here. And this is a woman that works at a popular restaurant in town. And, um, and she is also saying the same thing. So I think tonight I'm not gonna be able to vote for this. Even though I hate the, the orange signs, I, you know, I think we need ballers. I think, I like Front Street being closed. I think tonight this isn't a yes vote for me. I'm just not quite comfortable with this. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. I wasn't gonna share her stuff, but she'll be glad I did.
Comments?
I had never thought, thought about the idea of opening Front Street during the week and closing it on the weekends. Uh, they've occurred to me. It seems to make sense.
It was one of the options that were out there when, in this whole time, people forget. That there was a survey that had a lot of responses.
Yep.
Eight hundred, wasn't it?
Yeah, and ninety percent. That wanted it closed, so. It's not all of the businesses that have a problem with it.
Most of the businesses over time have been incredibly supportive.
Yeah.
And have found their businesses thriving. Um, I mean, a really great. Way to check all of that is our continuous conversations with the Chamber of Commerce and they represent. You know, the majority of the businesses in town. Um, and. Those conversations have been incredibly positive and supportive of Front Street being closed.
What, what's in that survey? Did they ask? I can't remember now. Did they ask, was that one of the choices? Close Front Street, um, on the weekends and have it open on the weekdays? Was that a question?
That was a question.
It was a question.
Yeah. And, and partial closure versus the whole thing was, was an option?
Yeah, we basically looked at every viable option for it.
Hmm.
And at this point, after having it closed for about forty years now. I think a lot of people view opening it up partially or for a couple of days a week. Would, would now be seen more as a public safety issue because people are used to it almost being closed.
Right.
Right? People are used to on any given day being able to walk within that closure area wherever they want in the street. Um, and changing that at this point, um. When human behavior has changed so substantially would then be a safety issue. Because people aren't expecting vehicles down there anymore.
So you're not hearing any requests for anything different happening down there? Or any complaints you have?
Yeah.
Request that it be like open during the week? Is that something that before we proceed, we should reinvestigate?
I, I don't know. I don't know if those numbers have changed from those. I mean, there's always been some. They've not been for it, but I don't know if. I mean, the, the things I have heard have all been supported.
It could, yeah, for me, it just makes me wonder. What is the difference between a thriving business and a business that's not thriving with the closure?
You know, I'll quote Jim Mayhew, this representative that was at my house. Um, he said that one thing that he was really well known for, he has a background as CPA in business. He was mayor pro temp and on the council in Snohomie, now only representative. So he said that one thing that he was really good at and emphasized was something called, um. Accountability to outcome, which means that after you institute something, you make sure you check and see how it's working. You're accountable to that outcome. And if it's working, it is, and you, you know, and if it's not, we force correct. So it could be, it just occurs to me, it could be that we haven't asked that question for years. You know, we haven't taken the temperature of the community or the business community in four years about it. I, I mean, in a formal way.
We definitely have. We've worked with the chamber and they have gone for, for the first couple of years through COVID, they went door to door asking. Um, how are you guys doing with the Front Street closure? How is this impacting your business?
So that's great. So maybe did it a couple of years ago. Anyway, I'm just saying, I don't know if it's a reason. Anyway, I'm just saying, I don't know if it's a reason not to pass it tonight, but you know, maybe we just have to be more intentional as a council about this accounting, this idea of accountability to outcomes.
Would it be out of hand to ask the chamber would do now just another cruise? Down, you know, email or something down through the businesses to see if they're good? Or like kind of like a check?
I'm not fully understanding your question.
Well, like
A cruise?
Well, you know, a email cruise or a text cruise down through the the town and ask the businesses. You know, are you good with them being open all, you know, all days, seven days a week? Or would you like to have it open during the week and close on the weekends and holidays?
You're talking about a survey of some sort?
Yeah, that's probably a good word.
I think that that's a challenging thing to do unless you're reaching out to the specific business owners. Because oftentimes when you walk into a shop, you're just going to get an employee.
Oh, yeah, it has to be business.
Well, I don't the business owners have phone numbers and or have like a text. You can send out a a text or if you call, we send out.
Chamber may have some contact information if they're a chamber member.
Just wondering.
Okay, well, we've got a motion and a second for ordinance sixteen ninety-seven. Do we have other comments? I've heard yours.
I'm still processing. I mean, I get I've I heard the comment last meeting and I've heard your comment. The overwhelming comments that I have heard have been people have been supportive of the closure. I have concerns about consistency. If it were to be opened on the weekday, I'm I'm just putting myself in Shannon's shoes as far as parking enforcement with people like, well, it was open yesterday. Anyone who wants an excuse to drive downtown, at least now it's consistent. I I I would worry about the ramifications of opening that door just to crack. And and frankly, it being a public safety issue now that we're four years in. I have concerns about that. Going into this meeting, I was I was an absolute yes on this. I felt like it was frankly a no-brainer, your concerns notwithstanding, sir. I I realized on big picture items like this, no one can be a hundred percent happy about this. But from what I'm hearing from Shane and from you, Rona, sounds like there's perhaps a bubbling undercurrent of folks that are not happy with this and perhaps more people than I had anticipated. I realize that the chamber has done some surveying of their members before in the past. Maybe things have changed from two years before to now. I don't know. Maybe it would be good to have that information from the chamber to make sure that there's still overwhelming support from the business community for this sort of thing. I assumed that would be so because I I guess I just assumed that if the chamber had significant issues with this, that either Troy would be here in person or he would have had conversations with the administration about, hey, let's talk about this. Perhaps the the currents changed on this. That was just, I guess, my assumption. I assumed full support from the chamber on this and this chamber businesses.
All that they've been dealing with with the downtown steering committee is geared at dealing with it being closed and what what the plan is to get it moving forward. That's the only discussion items have been how quickly it can move forward and how the financing is put together. And
Yeah, there's been some significant work over the last couple of years on the downtown master plan.
Right.
Through the downtown steering committee. And I think that opening Front Street for weekdays or a partial portion of Front Street would completely derail multiple years worth of really hard work on that because they have been operating under the guidance that Front Street is closed in perpetuity. And that was a very strong message that we sent starting in twenty twenty. I don't think there's a downside to reaching out to business owners and getting feedback. But I I don't think that that needs to impact a decision tonight. I think it's always great to know and understand.
You're codifying what they've already said and done in the past.
I would like to add one data point about whether or not, and this is not perfect, but this is just information. In two thousand nineteen, the city received in retail sales tax one point eight five million dollars. In two thousand twenty-three, we received two point seven million dollars and an increase in one million dollars in sales tax revenue over five years. If closing Front Street was killing downtown, this data would be footballed.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
But like.
Well, I think one of, if I remember quickly, one of the biggies, excuse me, was that the people that worked at the businesses were filling those parking spots. They were not.
They were.
I mean, I remember hearing that.
They were.
Eighty-three percent of those spots.
Yeah. And we we do continue to get complaints from people lack of ADA parking. They, and it's a lot of times, it's it's complaints from people who have visited Leavenworth in the past when Front Street was open. So their perception is I can't find a spot now. So they see that as, oh, I can't find a spot because you closed Front Street. When in reality, we know that they wouldn't have found a parking space on Front Street regardless. And we are working with our consultant to figure out where we should be adding ADA parking. It's something that Shane and I talk about on a weekly basis. It is definitely, it's definitely in front of our of our minds. But opening Front Street to traffic and opening up those hundred-plus parking spaces would not necessarily increase the availability of parking for ADAs.
So even opening Front Street to A Street?
What's that?
Opening down to A.
From Gustav's down to A.
That was a recommendation from our parking consultant to gain an additional hundred spaces. Was.
But it wasn't embraced by the chamber or you know, I mean, they they definitely because we approached that question about partially. Nope. Now that it's closed, we want it to stay. And that's again, what the work has been towards is is.
Well, opening that section of Front Street would eliminate that plaza
It would.
that has been underdesigned for the last couple of years. It would eliminate the businesses being able to operate out in that street.
Yeah.
I think only Goodrich House operated from.
And that's where the plaza is going to go. There, yeah.
Why don't we consider, so I I I think from my perspective, I would vote for this pass it tonight. And also I'd like to recommend to the chamber within the next three months that they do a survey of downtown businesses and get a get a flavor. Is this still working for you? Is there other questions? There's, well, there's going to be questions. But not just to blow it off, but to get, try and get some data about how it is now. You know, I think that'd be, that would be valuable, but I don't think we should stop initiated a valid system, I think. Because and then we get something that really changes it, well, then we can, you know. Because I think we've got to have it closed for sure on weekends. And I would think throughout the day because it has been, I mean, the data is there. It has been very successful. Time and time again, there is ADA parking. The ADA can park in every single, they can park all over downtown. Yeah, the meters. So there is, it's there. It's it's a different, it's a different way, but it's still there. It's not gone.
Yeah, probably people don't know that.
I think the issue with the parking is that people don't know what they can do. Who are out of town?
Well, that information comes with their ADA parking.
It does.
Yeah.
That information is provided to them when they're given their letter. So they know that they can park in any, any parking stall on a city street.
That's true.
Throughout Washington state.
But you still have to reflect, if it's three-hour parking and you can't park, you have to get out.
You still have to abide by timelines, but you don't have to pay.
No.
Yeah.
Any of them, right?
Well, I just wanted to make it clear that I I like Front Street closed, not the parking in Gustav's. I think that should be open, but the main one, I think, is very European. And so I'm not totally against, I just have this weird thing where a bunch of people have to happen to tell me a bunch of problems they had with it, like in the last week, you know, it's just. Anyway.
Well, I like the idea of go ahead and vote on it and ask the chamber if they would do some surveying and see what, how that.
But there was some issues raised and we want to make sure that they're not more pervasive than.
Because they can always change it.
Make an assumptions that are fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to present like that.
All right. With that in mind, I will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor of passing ordinance sixteen ninety-seven. Let me see your hand. Okay, and opposed? So it's six to one. And
Use it, use it.
We will move to the next item.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see on the video. Who was it? Who opposed it?
I didn't vote for it.
Rona did.
Didn't vote. Okay.
That a no or an abstain?
That was a no.
No, I just said no, I'm just.
Okay. No? Okay.
Not the abstain again, because we know.
We are checking that out, aren't we?
Yeah, we'll change that one.
Okay, thanks, Shelby.
Yeah, it's on my list. I haven't yet, but it's on my list.
Put it on the top.
Emergency hydrant replacement project, Andy.
This is just the formal acceptance of the work that Karen did last summer to replace hydrants throughout our system that were out of condition during the wildfire season. So we issued a de- emergency declaration and got the RC and the contract to complete this work. Again, this is just the formal acceptance of their work.
Change your motion.
The Leavenworth City Council moves to accept the emergency hydrant replacement project and authorize the mayor to execute the associated final contract voucher certificate.
Second.
Moved by Sharon, seconded by Ann. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously. Item thirteen, purchase and sale agreement. Shelby.
Thank you, Mayor. Council. Since two thousand eighteen or earlier, the city has expressed interest in acquiring the former Cascade Quick Move and Auto Wash located at fourteen fifty-one U.S. Highway Two for municipal purposes. A two thousand twenty-two space needs assessment conducted by ARC Architects indicates that the city requires this area for the public works campus due to a needed future expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. The only location that the treatment plant can expand is uphill where our shop is currently located. That's a domino effect. An October two thousand twenty-three appraisal by Newmark Valuation Advisory commissioned by the city indicated the property is worth two point one six million dollars. And utilizing an integrated planning grant from the Department of Ecology, the city conducted phase one, phase and phase two environmental site assessments and a hazardous material survey of the property. We did this in the spring of twenty-four. Seeing no environmental constraints on the property, the city council is being asked to consider acquiring the property for an agreed upon price with the owner of one point nine million dollars.
Has that price just jacked up here recently? Because it wasn't that a few years back.
No, it has, it has gone up since the city expressed interest in it in two thousand eighteen. But so has every other property in town.
That's like double.
It's tripled a lot.
Yeah.
Just for a comp, folks are aware of Mana, the restaurant Mana, that was just listed today for one point eight million. That is, that is a third of the size of this parcel.
And it's an old house.
It's just a small house. On a smaller space. It hasn't sold yet, but.
No, but it was listed.
Are they selling the business with the property?
No.
Oh, wow.
So make your reservations for Mana. I just did.
There you are.
No, go to my birthday.
So we're not just having it sucked to us.
Well, it's less than what our appraisal was in two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah.
What was it that?
Two point one six, yeah.
We also, and we now know it's clean.
Yeah, yes, you know, it's a property. I would entertain that motion.
The Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a purchase and sale agreement for the property located at fourteen fifty-one U.S. Highway Two for one point nine million dollars.
Second. Did you say it like that?
I heard Ann seconded it. There might have been others.
What a neat direction.
Any other questions?
Yeah, when will we move on doing something with it?
What's that?
When will we move on doing something with it?
So I still have a hundred thousand dollars left in the integrated planning grant through ecology that we can utilize to further the exploration of incorporating this this parcel into the rest of the public works of the campus.
Okay, but when a when a other is depending on funding.
Yeah.
So.
So just like the Osborne tear down, when is it ever going to come down?
Well, no, the current idea, it's not a plan yet, but its idea is to actually move parking into the car wash building. That would free up where parking took over office space that was occupied by public, by some public work staff. It'll give us a little more room over there.
But it's a short.
Yeah, parking department.
Yeah.
Good first plan.
Yeah, good first one.
Very first.
And you build a beautiful mural springing.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously. Thank you all. And now we're at council report. Sharon.
I went on a road trip on the twenty-ninth with Pete Olson. And we drove around Leavenworth and stopped at different places, ADUs and condos. And I got a lot of very interesting information and really appreciated it because I'm more visual and hands-on than of, you know, reading. And then I went to the planning commission meeting and I've been swimming at the pool.
Swimming, yeah. Water rockets.
No reports at this time. Thank you.
And?
I also don't have a lot of meetings the first
All right.
first couple of weeks of the month.
See?
So I had the last council meeting. I sat down with Lilith, a nice tutorial on the inclusion calculator, which is really helpful. I might be, I'll probably be back. But that's a start. But that was really good. And we had a housing advisory committee meeting twenty-seventh. And we basically discussed, well, we had Valiber Builder Contractor, that Carl's there. With, no, Clint Hartwray. So that was good. He gave us some perspectives on just what the world was like for them. I'm not going to go into that detail, but it's been really valuable to sit down with Jordan McDevitt, but Hartwray just bringing that kind of stuff in. And so that's the gist of that one. And then I attended the planning commission meeting this first of the month, and that's when the public hearing was done and contributed to that. You were talking about condos. So that's the end of my report. Right?
James?
I had a very productive meeting with the Upper Valley for Valley of the Food Coasters group last week. And we we have a lot to do to get ready for the election coming up for the full levy. We have literature for flyers and yarn signs. They're hoping to get ordered and printed. I want to thank Shankel for providing info to the group and especially especially Kara Raftery for helping convert the verbiage to to Spanish. Yeah, yeah, hoping to get flyers and signs out in the next few years, you know, if the ballots will get mailed out. if the ballots will get mailed out at nineteen, I believe. Or the land is mailbox is on the nineteenth.
That was a lot.
Yeah.
One.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm there since early August.
And I hope it ends.
Yeah.
And they're asking for fifteen cents or a thousand on this one. And if it doesn't pass, then it'll run again in November, probably at the eleven cents.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't pass, then there's no pool next summer.
Right. Right, well that.
Well, um, so this candidate, I, he probably contacted all of you, right, Jim Major, who said you wanna get, no?
No.
Oh, he didn't. But he's pretty weird. I thought he contacted everyone in the city council.
I don't think he contacted, well.
He's gone anyway. Anyway, he's a Democrat. I'm an independent, but I usually vote Democrat, almost always, actually, but um, anyway, it was really interesting, and the people that came over are really engaged in town. Still live in different ways. Yeah, here you can, he wants to know if I'm gonna endorse him, which I probably won't per se, but he's good. I would check it out. And it's, it's interesting now, because we've been redistricted, so, you know, it's, it's um, fifty-one percent over there, forty-nine percent over here, I think, is how it is. We might, you know, how do we bridge it? But anyway, that's what was going on. That's a good idea. So I'll bring him up in here later on and say, but um, I also went to um, the meeting, you went to the planning commission.
Oh, yeah.
And um, I went to a solid waste council meeting, um, let's see, what's interesting here, there's something called the uh, Leavenworth Brush Yard Update. They go out east Leavenworth Road and pick up brush, and they're gonna do it this year, but then they may not do it that set because they may, may actually put the winter to do it. They talked about um, grenades and different explosives and how they could um, deal with those and how they do deal with them in their bomb, bomb squad. Probably the most relevant thing is this business organic management area um, request starting January first of twenty twenty-five, four cubic yards. If you have that much weekly, you have to be dealt with that. You have to deal with that and outside garbage receptacle, and that would apply to all businesses downtown. But the problem is that it goes by the amount of money the business makes, and that doesn't necessarily mean that they have four cubic yards. In fact, they probably don't. So there's, it's, it's one of these rules, it's coming from the state, but it's gonna be hard to apply here. It sounds like it's gonna be difficult to administer, and it's gonna be expensive. So um, uh, they talked about tire amnesty event, which is waitlisted due to lack of funding, and then some budget stuff. And I think, yeah, that's it.
Travis, do you have something?
Yes, the Fest Hall Oversight Committee meeting yesterday morning. We all, uh, we, we all figured Sharon was working on her tan at the pool. I think she's, she's always so busy in the summer. We missed you.
I actually thought that said it was canceled from Sue.
There was, oh, I know, there was. Wasn't, but it was, there was a mix-up, and she sent the invites. It was Monday morning after a holiday weekend. I mean, she sent the invites, but they were late. But it, it anyway, so we're, we discussed actually not really having the meetings anymore, or as needed, rather. Um, but Ashley will still give Sue uh, monthly reports uh, which we will get on the committee, but also as needed, with quarterly uh, visits to the city council for um, study sessions to do a report. Um, we discussed uh, tracking events that um, inquired about using the Fest Hall regionally or national events that wanna come, um, but don't end up following through on a permit and kind of develop, figuring out why. Uh, maybe they didn't come. Um, and that's also tracking um, the permits that were de- denied, like to see what, why, why are we denying them and and kind of eval- being able to evaluate both of those situations. Um, talked about roller skating all year, which is a really cool idea. But we're gonna just test it and expand one week uh, after next, this fall into the winter. So one week at a time, uh, growing it instead of having it every Wednesday, and not many people show up because we discussed whether it's viable to have a volunteer and train this volunteer, um, but then you talk about liability and signing waivers, and somebody gets hurt uh, pretty bad, probably with uh, roller skating. So we thought we'd just kind of expand it one week at a time. We, it was a big turnout, a lot of sessions this year. You guys know I brought it up. Uh, but it really was one of the better years after, I think, two years now, Shelby, we've been roller skating Wednesdays.
Uh, this is the second, second winner, yeah.
Second winner. Um, so it to, to the point of us not having meetings as regularly, the roller skating was, was a big topic on the agenda. Um, so, um, stage, uh, the new, the stage we have and some of the wear and tear that the stage gets by breaking it down and kind of figuring out establishing a policy or being more firm on it, or figuring out what that looks like, uh, whether it's um, a non-refundable deposit, which goes towards that, that capital investment towards fixing and repairing and ultimately buying a new stage as it gets broken down. Um, so that's, that's kind of what's going on with the Fest Hall Oversight Committee. That's it.
All right. You. Um, I don't have a big report except for, I will say, Rona, you're excused because you're new, but we can't do politicking at in the council chambers, so the materials and stuff that you handed out for Jim and.
Oh, for him?
Yes.
Oh, God.
The test, yeah. That's off limits here, so if you wanna do it one-on-one with these guys at some point, but not in the council chambers.
Yeah, okay, it's just education.
Yes, education, right.
Okay.
Um, and I'm gone next week. My fiftieth anniversary gathering with all of my family. That's what we asked for, for our fiftieth, and we're getting it. So I'm gone next week and I'll see you later.
Cool.
Yeah.
Uh, very quick report, because I don't have time to repair one. I was, I, the mayor and I and Chantel spent all day in a training with the public employment uh, per public employment uh, relations commission. Thank you, Perk, a three-member commission, state agency. Uh, so Paige Todd um, gave training about bucket bargaining basics to, to us and to uh, Paul Farley from Teamsters and the two shop stewards, John Chauncey, Christian Winston, and we set our first bargaining uh, meeting for August.
Six.
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 I think it's six.
Yeah, that sounds right. That sounds right. Uh, and the compensation study from Cabot Dow is uh, being finalized now with their recommendations, so. So I have for my day today. Oh, I am also going on vacation next week. The mayor and I did not coordinate our schedule very well. Uh, but I'm flying back to Massachusetts on Saturday. If you need anything, talk to Anne.
So who's in charge?
Anne.
Nobody.
Yeah, Anne's in charge. Deputy Mayor Anne.
Let me know what you need, Sharon.
Chantel.
So with the theme tonight, no report.
Bella.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, we're, we're doing well. The new uh, building official is got his feet wet, is out there inspecting, is looking at policy. Hello, policies he's looking at is the short-term rental and the conversion. I know that that came up last year or the year before. Last year's a wash, pardon me. Went way too fast. But any case, uh, that short-term rental conversion is still on the table, and it was one of the high priorities to have the new building official take a good look at that. And uh, today I just reviewed some draft code that we could put in place to to do that, because I know that was part of the discussion last time it came up. So anyway, very busy, getting his feet wet, and uh, that team is jiving pretty well, I think, you know. So that's, that's good news there, so. Leave it at that.
Andy?
Really quick, but I did just want you all to be aware of Front Street vestiums, the um, construction project. The amount that we brought to you did not include sales tax, and I forgot to explicitly write that in the write-up for that.
That was in the estimate.
It was.
We had discussed that when we approved it. We knew that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, never mind.
I think there was a sentence that said it.
Yeah, there was a notation in the, in the.
Okay, so that was discussed.
Yeah. But it's a pro- to bring it up, because that will be in, it wasn't in tonight's amendment with the big dollars.
Yeah.
So in the next amendment, I'll be incorporating that self.
And that's why I wanted to update you so that you knew that that's what I was gonna. Um, and then the last item is just, obviously, is, you know, the public works department is in an interim status right now, so um, appreciate the patience and please just know things on the administrative side of things are gonna be a little bit slower right now. Um, there's, there's quite a bit that, as a team, we're kind of dividing and cooperating, so thank you.
We're glad you're here, yes.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah.
Willing to step in.
Yeah.
All right.
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we're done. You guys have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Put your hands on.
Yay.
See you, guys.
Hey, Travis.
Yeah.